Good morning, Mr. President, Council members, ladies and gentlemen. On the consent agenda this morning, we have legislative minutes from January the 5th, 2021, open work session minutes from December the 1st, 2020, on the update of the CARES Act funding, open work session minutes from December the 1st, 2020, on the NIMS training classes for elected officials, open work session minutes from December the 15th, 2020, on the concession agreement with Sentinel Robotics Solutions LLC, open work session minutes from December the 15th, 2020, on the new public safety building.
Right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda of the minutes? Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. The votes were unanimous. Ms. Hurley? But we have a proclamation to recognize National Mentoring Month. At this time, can Ms. Nonah Hoffman go to the podium with Ms. Ackley?
I'm actually Jessica Mims, I'm sorry. Ms. Nora scheduled the proclamation for us.
Thank you for coming, it's a pleasure to have you here. And thank you to Big Brothers and Big Sisters for continuing to reach out to the children in Wycomico County during this very difficult time. Thank you. Whereas during National Mentoring Month, we celebrate the dedication, men and women, who volunteer their time, talents and resources to mentor, teach, and empower young people and those in need of guidance. Whereas mentors come from a diverse background and improve their lives of America's youth, helping them to grow into responsible adults. Whereas Wycomico County and across the country, mentors serve not only as a role model for young people, but also as an inspiration to the dream and pursuit of goal regardless of circumstance. Now therefore, in recognition of the numerous contributions made by mentors in Wycomico County, be it resolved that Wycomico County Council and the Acton County Executive hereby proclaim January 20th as National Mentoring Month. Thank you. Should I say anything?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. I want to thank everyone here, thank you for all you do for the community. And I just wanted to say that I'm very honored to do what I do for a living. The community has stepped forward during this troubling time and really stepped forward for the children. We have mentors that were already existing that continued to mentor, they just transitioned into virtual and distance mentoring. And then we also have people in the community that have never mentored before, that have stepped up during these times to say, how can I make a difference? Because they see, they see children struggling through virtual learning with school, being isolated socially from their friends and family. So we've had people step up in a ways, in a way that we didn't even expect. So Big Brothers, Big Sisters has resumed our work. And even more so, we've been able to deliver resources to many of our families because through case management, we know of their many needs. So I thank you all for everything you do, and I thank you for supporting mentoring in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a proclamation to recognize M.C. Ocean, Shamika Wilson, as Wycomico County's Correctional Officer of the Year. Could you please join Mr. Ernie Davis at the podium?
Good morning. Not only we're going to congratulate you, we're going to congratulate all the officers. You guys got a tough job over there, especially with this pandemic going on, and you can't, you got all those people isolated in there, you guys doing outstanding job. I see you got the Colonel here and the gentleman sitting up there, I want to thank both of you. But today, we're going to honor you as the Correction Officer of the Year. It is a great pleasure that the members of the Wycomico County Council and the Acton County Exec extend this certificate of appreciation to Master Correction Officer Shamika Wilson for your dedicated service to the citizens of Wycomico, Maryland. While ever striving to exercise professionalism, great good judgment, and fairness, we thank you for your ability to participate the needs of your community and for the grace you extend to the council staff and citizen on this day, the 19th of January, 2021.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I'm not big on words, but it is, it takes a thick skin to do this job, especially a woman. I came to Colonel Kimball seven years ago about this job, and here I am seven years later. It is very appreciative, and I mean, I just did my job, and that's all it's about. That's, I mean, I'm very appreciative of it and everything, and thank you for recognizing me, and I think WCDC too, and the councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we have a proclamation to recognize Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. today. Do we have Mr. Jesse Bowler? Do you want to go ahead and read it?
Sure. This is to commemorate the staff of the Tri-County Coalition. I was online or Zoom last night, and I saw the operation last night, even though it wasn't in person, they did do an outstanding job with their Facebook and Zoom presentation, and their speaker was outstanding. I commend her for her speech. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King inspired millions with his compassion and ideas of equality and was the driving force behind the civil rights movement focused on creating a peaceful society tolerant of all races, cultures, nationalities. And the celebration of Dr. King's birthday is extended to commemorate his life and legacy, as well as his chance for citizens to reaffirm their commitment to the basic constitutional principles that all men are created equal. And Wycomico County enjoys a diverse population embracing all ethnic and racial groups as Dr. Martin Luther King did. And this day is a reminder of the importance of serving others through community service and coming together to focus on common concerns. And this celebrates an officer time of reflection on the ideas of Dr. Martin Luther King and serves as a reminder that improving the quality of life for all races, cultures, and nationalities is a responsibility of all members of society. And this day serves as a reminder for Wycomico County's commitment to the human rights and to carry on Dr. King's legacy. Therefore, be it resolved that Wycomico County Council and the Acton County Execs join the Tri-County Coalition Incorporated in celebrating the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King at its 36th Annual Birthday Celebration and Commemoration Event done this 19th Day of January 2021. I'll make sure they get this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. This time, I'd like to recognize Dr. Donna Hanlon from the Board of Education, Mr. John Palmer, a board member from the board, and Mr. Michael Stoffer, one of the assistant superintendents. Ms. Hurley?
Next on the agenda, this is a public hearing on Resolution Number 04-2020, approving a concession agreement between Wycomico County and Maryland and Sentinel Robotics Solutions LLC to provide unmanned aircraft systems for light operations at this Salisbury Regional Airport. The public hearing notice was published in the Daily Times, campus and website stating a public hearing will be held this morning at 10:00 a.m. And we do have Mr. Rudy here from the airport, he's our airport manager.
All right, this time, I'd like to open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 04-2021. If any public comments, please state your name and county residence, and so please go to the podium. Do you have any public comments? All right, this time, we're going to close the floor to the public hearing. Any motion to approve Resolution Number 04-2021?
Consider.
Do you have a second? Yeah, Mr. Hoddle. Yes, sir. Discussion?
I see they lowered the liability insurance from five million to three million.
Yes, that was requested by Sentinel Robotics, and we had the prompt that the three million does meet the county's insurance requirements. Not quite sure why, it sounded high, but it was quite a burden on them to give out three million to be supplied.
So the county does have a, the county does have a set amount that...
The three, and every three million might say three million is set.
Is that for the airport, or is that for the countywide, or...
That's kind of like, they didn't do a lot of three million apps, it's just a few.
Seems to be a more risky, more risky venture, I would think, you know, with drones and things like that. Why was it set up at five million to begin with? They agreed with it to begin with, right?
Yeah, but I'm not sure where the five million came from, because they did ask for redemption, so we're not, kind of determined to decide.
Any more discussion? All right. All in favor of Resolution Number 04-2021, please say aye. And opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, resolution passed unanimously. Ms. Hurley?
Next, for your consideration is the submission of appointments/reappointments to the Oregon County Recreation and Parks Commission, PAC 14 Incorporated Board of Directors, and the Tourism and Civic Center Commission. The Recreation and Parks Commission serves an advisory capacity to the Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism, on all matters concerning policies for public recreation, the establishment of recreation programs, and the creation of recreation policies. Wycomico County Tourism and Civic Center Commission also serves an advisory capacity to the Director of the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism. It reviews and makes recommendations on matters concerning the comprehensive planning, policy interpretation, a budget, operation, and capital improvement as they relate to fulfilling the departments and the civic centers' respective vision and mission. The PAC 14 Incorporated Board of Directors is responsible for all of the areas and activities of PAC 14 Incorporated.
Right. Need a motion to approve on the consent agenda for appointments to boards and commissions and a second. Any, do they have a motion?
Consider.
They have a second? They have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. President, would you like me to read those resolutions?
Yes, ma'am, could you please?
Okay, one of your consent agenda, you have Resolution Number 05-2021, confirming the appointment of Christopher C. Hall to the Tourism and Civic Center Commission. Resolution Number 06-2021, confirm the appointment of Christopher A. Bitters to the Tourism and Civic Center Commission. Resolution Number 07-2021, confirm the appointment of Christy Pears Weir, Ph.D., to the Tourism and Civic Center Commission. Resolution Number 08-2021, confirm the appointment of Carlos Ayella to the Tourism and Civic Center Commission. Resolution Number 09-2021, confirm the appointment of Micah Stoffer to the Tourism and Civic Center Commission. Resolution Number 10-2021, confirm the appointment of Edward W. Urban to Recreation and Parks Commission. And Resolution Number 11-2021, confirm the appointment of Larry W. Dodd as a designated Director of PAC 14 Incorporated.
Thank you for reading this, Ms. Hurley. With that said, we have a motion and a second agreement, discussion. Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda for these names read, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, Ms. Hurley passing unanimously.
Next, for your consideration is Resolution Number 12-2021, authorizing the Acton County Executive to accept a grant award on the community foundation of the Eastern Shore in an amount of $5,000 for setting the emergency hotel and motel temporary space. And we have Mrs. Michelle Riley here, Director of the Local Land Chamber, if there are any questions.
Right, need a motion to approve Resolution Number 12-2021. Got a motion by Mr. Haynes, do we have a second? Second by Mr. McCain, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 12-2021, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, Ms. Hurley passing unanimously. Mr. Hitchens?
Good morning. I call your attention to Resolution Number 13-2021, contending with the draft declaration from the Internal Auditor on Organizational Independence.
Okay, at this time, we need a motion to approve Resolution Number 13-2021. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Would I make?
Yes, sir.
The Institute of Internal Auditors standards require an annual confirmation of organizational independence. Independence by internal auditors comprises of a work environment free of interference from management and a functional reporting structure to the Board of Directors, in which case for our member of the county is the county council. Functional reporting to the council involves council approving the annual audit plan, directly receiving communications and having meetings with the internal auditor, wanting or removing the internal auditor, and a group of conversation.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 13-2021, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, Ms. Hurley passing unanimously. This time, we're to open the floor to public comments. Please limit all public comments to three minutes or less. Any present, presentable materials may be submitted to the council members, if so, please include 10 copies.
John Palmer, Delmar, Maryland. I'm here as just a taxpayer right now. I've watched on PAC 14 on December 1st, the presentation of the Horizon Project, and it kind of went through really fast. I don't think a lot of people know what's going on in this, and I think somehow the people have to be informed. And what I'm afraid is going to happen is it'll come back with enabling legislation from the General Assembly. It's going to be put up here, just like the airport, the drones was. There are going to be a quick public hearing, boom, followed by a vote, and the people won't know what's going on. So if there was a way that you can let the public know what's going on, that would be deeply appreciated. And a personal opinion, that, that presentation by the Salisbury group, that was very unprofessional. You had numerous questions that you wanted answers to, and they couldn't answer it. They just put it off, or they looked at one another, and that wasn't a good presentation to present to you or to the public. The rush, 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 let's get it done, get it signed, and we'll fill it in later, that reminds me the Nancy Pelosi effect. Let's sign it, and we'll see what's in it later. And if there was just a way that we could maybe slow this down, let the people know what's going in there and how it's going to be presented, the pros and cons for the, for the county, that would be great. One part that came up during that presentation was somebody said, well, we're arguing over money that we don't even know yet of what's going to happen. I, I didn't like that, because when you guys meet for your county council to go over your budgets, you're arguing over money that you don't have yet. You don't know how much is going in, going to come in, you know approximately how much, but you don't know what's going to come in. And that's the same thing with the, the tax credit that's going to be granted to the city of Salisbury. So I ask when you do these things that you put more information out to the public so that the public can understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Do you have any more public comments?
Good morning, President Dodd, members of the council. Excuse me, Donna Hanlon, Superintendent of Schools. Thanks for the opportunity to provide some brief comments this morning about a couple of items that you have coming up that were added to your agenda concerning legislation or support from the council for legislation in this coming legislative session, and you're going to be considering that this afternoon, both of which impact the Board of Ed. The first is legislation that you considered last year and is coming back to you this year, and we are in full support of that. It has to do with amending the transportation article to allow our public schools, or Wycomico Public Schools, to transport small groups of students in vans or an alternative transportation other than school buses. This will allow us to be much more efficient and to be able to use all of our school buses that are so desperately needed. And so I, I know that you're going to be considering that later this morning, and I appreciate the fact that Mrs. Hurley called Desmond Hughes and asked that he be available to respond to questions. The second item, unfortunately, we didn't get that same call asking us to be available to answer questions, and that is legislation that's been proposed to change the state education article on budget requirements. In this particular case, the, the letter, the draft letter that has been written has two requirements listed in it, and I thought that it would be important to share my comments with you, not only in the spirit of collaboration, but to maybe save you some time and energy, because in both of those cases, that legislation isn't necessary, and I'm going to explain to you quickly why. The, the draft letter is saying that it would require the Board of Ed to submit to the council on or before November 1st and March 1st each fiscal year a report detailing all expenditures within the major categories of its annual budget. Well, that report already exists, and it's provided not only to the council, but it's provided to any community member who wants to see it. In fact, it's month by month in more detail than what you're requiring. It's on our transparency portal. We have, have brought to you some screenshots of that transparency portal, so you can see how easy it is to get to and how it is itemized, and again, in greater detail than you're even asking by category. So that's our effort to be transparent, and what you're trying to do through legislation already exists. The second piece of, and I, I, we are going to stay in case you have additional questions during that open work session, but, so I'll just leave it at that with the screenshots for now. The second thing in, in the report that your draft letter is requesting is that any time that the Board of Ed is asked to spend more in a major category than was approved in the annual budget that we let you know, that's already in the law. Jessie is, is passing that out to you, it's already there. We, we can't break the law in that regard. Anytime we have a transfer from category to category, we have to bring it to the council. And there's another piece of the law, which is on the right side of what Jessie just, just provided for you, that requires us to submit to the county government body a report within 15 days after the end of each month. If during that month, the county board takes any action that would commit the county board to spend money for the current fiscal year in, in any major category, above, sorry, in any major category than the amount approved in the annual budget. So that's already in the law. So I, I come to you in all sincerity, asking you to consider the need for collaboration on items like this. I know your sentence in your letter says that this will allow for greater transparency and will help promote trust between the county Board of Ed and the county and the public. It doesn't feel that way to us. It makes us wonder, where is this coming from? We've won awards for our transparency. We have clean audits every year. We had a strong legislative audit that that report we've just provided to you in a recent work session. And we're happy to sit down and collaborate with you at any time. So that, those are my public comments, and we hope that we can continue to collaborate with you, because we do want that trust between our organizations, and it's only by communicating and talking with each other that we're going to be able to do that. So as I said, we will be, we will be here, and if you have additional questions and would like for us to even show you on the transparency portal where all of that great detail is, we're happy to do that during your work session.
Thank you, Dr. Hanlon. We do have a good work relationship with the Board of Ed, and we hope to keep it that way. The work session is just basically discussion, and I thought you were contacted, and it was a last minute placement on the agenda, as you know. So we, Ms. Hurley, I think she did invite you to the meeting, just in case there were any questions. I'm sorry. The board president was invited? They were notified, okay. Now, was it better job?
No, it was described as not exactly what I had.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more public comments? Any more public comments? Anyone have a call? All right, council comments? Do we have any council comments? I guess not. Presidential comments, I don't have anything to say other than I want to recognize the council, the board chair, Mr. Gene Malone, he walked in a little late, so thank you and welcome. This time, I need a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions, followed by closed work session pursuant to the general provision of Article Section 3-305b, 1 and 7, as follows, to discuss a personnel matter relating to the evaluation of employee, which will be held in closed session to protect the confidentiality of the said employee, and to consult with legal counsel in closed session to protect the attorney-client privilege. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? You have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
All right, thank you. At this time, we're going to go into the open work session. First on the agenda is the capital improvement program fiscal year 2022 to 2026 for the Department of RECS. We have Mr. Steve Miller, Director of RECS Parks and Tourism. Thank you, if you both would identify yourselves for the record.
Good morning. My name is Steve Miller, I'm the Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism for the county.
Good morning, my name is Katie Ross, I'm the Deputy Director for Recreation, Parks, and Tourism.
Welcome, Mr. Miller.
Thank you for having us this morning. We're here to answer any questions or provide any information that you need about proposed projects that we've included in our FY '22 CIP. I'll make just two very brief comments about the projects that we've submitted. We're very pleased with the list of projects, we feel good about the projects, and we feel each and every one of them meets our mission, which is to improve the quality of life of our citizens. And there's a number of the projects which we may touch upon which address safety of citizens and people attending our events, which, which always is a top priority. So that's one, we, we just feel good about the projects. Two, in terms of the funding, just so you understand what you're looking Two, in terms of the funding, just so you understand what you're looking at, we proposed in FY '22 approximately $2 million worth of projects. Ninety percent of that will be funded outside of the general fund, at least in terms of our request. So we're looking at grants and other funding sources that we have. So approximately 10, 10, 11% of it, we would be asking from the general fund, whether that would be to match a grant or to help fund projects. So the bulk of what we're talking about is grant-funded or funded in some other way, and I just wanted to point that out. But with that, we'd be happy to talk about any project in particular and answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Miller?
Just make a quick comment.
Mr. McCain?
I mean, I think there's some very, very worthy projects on here that's definitely going to improve the quality of life of our citizens, and, you know, I'm glad to see the Pirate's Wharf master plan getting developed and the first stages developing out there. I think that's going to be a major asset to our county, and it looks great out there. You know, I see where they've done all the tree plantings and some of the initial work. So, you know, I just think this is a very robust and very well-thought-out and a very good plan.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. Do we have any more comments or questions? Mr. Hastings?
Oh, yeah, I just also wanted to follow that up. Same comments. It was really good to see the Conley Mill piece on there, as well as the tourist center dog park. I know I've reached out a couple of times. The folks in my district have had a lot of concern that Salisbury Dog Park, and then even the incoming smaller one, is just not enough. So it was great to see that on there. And then I always hear from my, I'm a big disc golf fan, so I'm always hearing from folks in the disc golf community who would love to see another course or expanded course. I know the city's going to take up kind of a nine-hole piece, but we have, in case folks don't know, we do have one of the best disc golf courses in the entire region here in Shoemaker Pond, and so they really appreciate that, too. Thank you. Great work.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Do we have any more comments or questions for Mr. Miller? Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next, we have the Department of General Services, Mr. McCain.
Can I make one comment?
Can you hold up, and then you can go to the mic unless you want to go to the podium?
Sure. I just wanted to let you know that in reviewing this, the numbers don't change. I realized that I made a typo in the spreadsheet that's attached to this. It's just a matter of moving a dollar mount up a line. So on page, and so I wanted you to be aware as we go forward that if I, when this is finalized, there's one change. On page, page, I know I wrote it, page eight of the capital improvement plan, line 24 has tourist welcome center marquee at $75,000, and then there's a $500,000 in 2023. That actually belongs to the harbor dredging, the line above it. So it is just a typo. Dollar amounts don't change. Funding source doesn't change. It's just I, when I was typing this up, got it in the wrong line. So I wanted you to be aware that if, when this comes back as a final approval, I'll be asking for that to move up.
Thank you for pointing that out. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Ms. Matthews?
Matthews, Department of General Services. I'm here this morning to answer any questions you may have for our proposed projects.
Can you go over briefly the projects?
Sure. Project number one, the old courthouse HVAC replacement. Presently, we're having the engineering study done on this work. We've got a hodgepodge of systems over there. The main problem is the building is 90 years old. It was a steam heating system, steam boiler, and steam radiators, and we're having steel pipes fail everywhere, within walls, within floors, and there's really just no effort. So we're getting engineering done to completely revamp the system, which is going to also create a significant amount of construction just because of the way the building was built. Most of the walls over there are either concrete or brick, anywhere from eight to 14 inches thick, which presents itself with a lot of issues trying to get upwork through walls, electricity through walls, so forth and so on. That's why the number is 200,000.
And that is a solid building. Are there plans to keep the piping in the walls?
No. Well, yes, the piping will stay in the walls, but it will be abandoned.
Okay.
It will be abandoned. We actually have one, or two, or three steam loops over there right now for various sections of the building. We've actually had to shovel one completely down and reclose up the steam loops, literally coming out of the wall.
Wow.
So this is probably something that should have been looked at 20, 25 years ago, and gradually brought up in speed, and now it's to the point where we have to do so.
Mr. Hastings?
Do we have a full understanding of all the projects that need to currently take place at the old courthouse? I know there's, I know it's significant, and I don't know if there's a plan for the building itself or anything further. I know we've gone along the outside, but the inside is, of course, where the real...
Well, our first four projects for this year are scheduled for the old courthouse. Along with the HVAC, we've got water infiltration issues. We've had the engineering study done on that. That's going to be a matter of funding, and it starts literally from the top top. There's going to be a significant amount of brick work that has to be done. Not that we'll do it all right now, but we will do it in phases. Ultimately, the windows in that building should be replaced. So there are several projects that need to be done in that building, but we're just going to have to table one at a time now, get us back to a good condition as to subsstand, get us back to a good condition, and then stay on top of things. So ultimately, there is a plan, but right now, we're playing catch-up.
I do appreciate you taking the time to address that still. It's a landmark of sorts, and my great-grandmother worked in the building for 30 years, in the 40s and then 50s. So I do really appreciate it. It'd be, it'd be a shame to lose half it. I feel like it's been far too long to address it, so I really do appreciate you taking the time.
Well, the structure itself is, it'll be there for a lot of years just because of the way it's built, and unfortunately, that adds to the expense that anybody would do to it. So it's not going to be an inexpensive building to work on, but the structure itself is worth spending money on. It would be, to replace that building, we'd probably look at $150 million. Probably look at $4 million to pare it down. Not that that's even on the table, but just to give you an idea of the asset that we have there in the facility. The next project is in that same building with electrical upgrades, also having the study being done on that right now, along with the HVAC study, the same engineering department is doing both. If you ever walk through the building, you'll notice conduits, exposed conduits running everywhere in the building. And with the electric, with the HVAC system upgrade, we're going to have to do some power upgrades to get things to support the new equipment. The next project is what we're calling the one-stop shop, which would be for the clerk's office. Presently, the public has to go everywhere in the building, from one side to the other. Ultimately, for security reasons, what we might be able to do is have the public go in one central area. The room is there, but it's not available at this time. It's presently holding land records. The clerk of the court's plan is to have most of that scanned in to storage, and the paper copies can be eliminated. What would happen then would be representatives from each individual office, the criminal division, the registered wills, civil division, would each have a representative in this one-stop area where the public goes to one room and have it each met rather than have the public throughout the building. That's, the safety concern there is the main factor. And again, it's a usage, space usage thing.
Do you know how long it will take to scan all of the documents?
No clue. I know there's a ton of them.
When do you think the room would be available?
I would say outside three years if possible, depending on, you know, the priority that the court system would put on that, that would, you know, I'd want to know. But I think, I believe the staff over there is on board with having this situation, has the one-stop.
Yeah.
So I think once we got staff bought into it, have them realize that you ever want to do this for your good as well as the public, I think things would be right along. Project number five is for this building, really this wall right here. Every hard ring from the west, this wirehead water coming in his windows down the hall. It has been addressed previously with cough, so forth and so on, and that's not the problem. The problem is between the brick and the wall itself, the interior wall itself. We just went through an exercise over at the new courthouse, found the same thing. It was never properly flush. So we're going to figure out what it takes to get this wall waterproof and keep the water coming in this building. The next item, Department's Inspection Office renovation would be new flooring, reconfiguring some of the spaces, and generally source it up completely now. Number seven, the Wycomico Nursing House generator replacement. Right now, the generator they have over there is 26 years old, and it does not support the necessary equipment, should there be an outage. Necessary equipment being refrigerators and freezers. They can keep the lights on, they can keep the heat on, they can keep some air conditioning on, but we will be upgrading from a 150 to a 225 KW generator for that facility. And the number eight, the air annual replacement for this building is an ongoing project that we're having the engineering study done on as of speak. And the air annuals of this building are original to the building, so in theory, whatever we spend on replacing, we will realize they return on efficiency.
Do you have any questions or comments, Mr. Matthews?
There's plenty there that was occurring now. That department across the street. Do you have a firework, something?
Yes and no. It's crowd work. There is a bit with some pumps in it presently, and we had talked about repairing that floor in previous discussions. We have decided to wait until we see what happens down the street at the Ross because there will be several hundred piles driven down there, and rather than throw good money out for bad, we were waiting to see what happens with all this pile of that driven. We're just going to change the hydraulics of that area. Right now, there are places where that floor, when it was, when that building, when you had to bought that building and changed it from JCPenney's to the Health Department, the basement floor had a layer of grout poured on it, which is anywhere from an inch to two inches thick, the level of the floor. The grout did not adhere to the concrete. Concrete wasn't properly treated for adhesion. So what's happened over there now is anywhere there was any moisture that came through the concrete has pushed this grout up. That's why, that's why the basement over there is closed off. The floor has, it's dangerous, and until we knew what was going to happen down the street that could affect where we were, we just weren't going to spend any money on it. So we'll see what happens with that building and go from there.
Ms. Matthews, what makes it dangerous, the mold?
No, the floor itself has got, I mean, there are places there, Mr. Dodd, where there's humps in the floor that exist, eight, ten, three, it's hot. It's just heat. The moisture has caused the grout to heat, and it's just dangerous to walk in the floor for. It's just not safe.
I would suspect that's moldy there.
No.
Really?
No.
We call it moisture. Ms. Holloway?
So the issue of what goes on down the street, would that have an ill effect on the Health Department building, or would it have?
If, the infrastructure should not be affected. The basement floor is where our concern is because it is below ground, and when you drive that many piles, you're going to change the hydraulics of the area, which is going to make a chance.
Is it going to make it worse?
It could make it worse, but it could be, once it's made worse and stabilizes, then we're okay. But we didn't want to take a chance or fix it, have them drop piles, and then all of a sudden, we're right back where we started.
Okay. Mr. Hastings?
Just to make you know, I saw the last week Salisbury Independent, looking back on January 14th, 1986, and in the article, it is, looks back and says Wycomico County Council voted to build a new county health department on 38-year, very early, the county jail would be, and basically, that's not quite sure what it's going to do with the building, Carroll Street, and whatever. It's amazing to see that we've gone, you know, all these years later, we're still facing some of the same issues.
I saw that as well.
I don't think the Health Department over there came online until around 1990.
But I, Carroll.
The purple building, I don't think we acquired that until around 1990. That's, every plan I've seen, drawings is in the 90s. So this could have been, this could have been, you know, when they approached this land for Sheriff's Park or something, I really don't know.
We're going to look up reading our books.
Yeah, when I read that, I had several questions myself. Do we have any more questions, Mr. Matthews?
I have one question.
You have another question?
Mr. Matthews, on the municipal courthouse. Do we have anyone that's sort of, that's trying to pursue any type of grants because of the fact it's a disturbed building?
Not this time. I need to, well, to visit that, but not this time.
And it may not be your exact responsibility, you know, talking to the acting county executive. I know that we've been talking about grants for some time now, whether or not we hire the grant writer in this meeting session to oversee, you know, many departments in the county, or whether we could look at individual departments. And general services might be good, where you actually bring someone in as a grant writer, but it seems like it might be an option.
Good work, Mr. Matthews. Thanks. Good question, Mr. McCain. Any more questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. You start. This time, we're going to have a discussion on broadband technology. Mr. John Omar, Director of Information Technology.
Well, hard to talk to this.
Yes, I know.
Good morning. Thanks for having me here to discuss broadband and power teams to Wycomico County and specifically. I've got a report that I've developed here, and I'd like to go through that, and at the end, if all right by you, I'll look out for any questions or discussions of the acting department. So what is broadband internet service? Broadband internet, defined by the SEC, is internet service that needs a minimum speed of 25 megabit download, 3 megabit upload. It can be obtained by either wired line or fixed wireless services. Broadband is not something that's new in Wycomico County. Been in the county for roughly 20 years. However, what is new is the emphasis of expanding to rural areas mainly brought on by the pandemic. Therefore, this is a fairly new and evolving process for many different parts. Expanding broadband networks to provide service to rural areas is an expensive and labor-intensive task, not only in actual construction, but also in the planning and engineering aspects that require... Not only in actual construction, but also in the planning and engineering aspects that require subsidizing by the state and federal government. This is somewhat similar to the expansion of electricity in the early 1900s.
Somewhat.
Yes.
If you can speak to more of the question.
Providing broadband service to all households will take many years to accomplish. So where's the county involvement in this? At the county level, we are staying informed by reviewing grant opportunities and monitoring legislation activity at state and federal levels. We're communicating with other local jurisdictions, jurisdictions and governmental organizations in our area in an effort to share knowledge. We're also working through the process of communicating with existing and potential internet service providers regarding their plans on network expansion and any grants they may pursue or have been awarded. In, in your handout, I provided a document that gives a brief explanation of the Maryland Office of Rural Walk broadband grant programs. So what's happening in Wycomico County right now? There are some projects happening and there are some projects on the horizon that we are aware of. So currently, there are two projects on the west side of the county being performed by the Maryland Broadband Cooperative that were funded through the governor's office of rural broadband. Quantico project is just about finished. The project in Hebron just started. And it's my understanding that it should be done by the end of February. Recently, the FCC has released Phase One of the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund Reverse Auction Grant Awards. In Maryland, there were five companies that received funding. In particular, two of these awardees pertain to the expansion in our area. First, the small one, there's a company named Blue Surf who is a fixed wireless provider in our area. They were awarded nine locations in an amount of $780. A very small award. Now, on a much larger scale, a company called Talky Communications, who is a fiber optic provider, was awarded $43 million for a total of 31 buildouts throughout the region. In Wycomico County in particular, there are more than 80 location buildouts that are being subsidized by Phase One of the FCC grant. These buildouts will happen over a six-year period and are set to begin once the FCC releases its funding, which could be some point later this year or in 2022. Uh, there's also, you can hand out a map of the buildouts that will happen in Wycomico County. That information was provided to us. So Talky and FCC and our GIS division did a nice job overlaying that on top of the county for us. So we get a good picture of how it pertains to us. Now, Talky Communications is a small company out of Chester Town, Maryland. Um, they'll be expanding their equipment assets and outsourcing the majority of the destruction and also leasing capacity on existing backbone fiber infrastructure to complete the buildouts. We spoke with them, uh, over the last couple of weeks about this when we were informed that they were one of the, uh, largest awardees of the FCC grant. Now, the map that I provided you, um, it's the different areas on the map that are shaded. And it's, it's kind of hard to see. Um, there's a lot of different build locations on that map. There's more than 80 of them that are slated to happen. They are broken down basically in what are census blocks. So what the FCC does is they look at census blocks. And if they see that that block is either underserved or not served at all, they target that for buildout and this grant subsidy. Now, the map, map does not completely show the full picture of where broadband doesn't exist in the county. It can be a little bit misleading in terms of if, if a particular census block does have one household that already is served, FCC as I understand it marks that block as completely served. When in reality, there could be several residents or homes or businesses that are in that block that don't have access. So, um, that is not the, uh, say all of where broadband exists and where it doesn't exist in Wycomico County. So, um, at the state level, there are two pieces of legislation that are of importance to broadband that we are actively paying attention to. And I just provided you a copy of both of those House bills. Uh, House Bill 43. This bill establishes the Office of Broadband in the Maryland Department of Information Technology. Through our contacts with Mago and specifically, uh, the IT affiliate that I communicate with. Um, it's my understanding that this bill does not have that much support for. So, uh, we've been following House Bill 97, which is the second bill I handed you. This bill establishes the Office of Digital Inclusion in the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. So through, through Mago and discussions that we've had, it's my understanding that this bill has much more support. Maybe not in an exact form, maybe a hybrid of the two bills. But this bill, as I understand it, kind of builds off of the Office of Rural Broadband that the governor already has established and makes it a kind of a permanent entity within the state government.
John, does that, does that support, um, or when you say support, are you referencing Mago or are you referencing the delegation?
Delegation.
Delegation.
Yep. And I, I, I think, I, it's fair to say that Mago probably supports that one more from, from the IT affiliate standpoint. That's where we had our discussion right now. There are some particular parts of that bill that are noteworthy. In particular, the creation of a statewide audit of where broadband does and does not exist. Uh, including the creation of granular maps and other demographic information. This would be very key in helping the local jurisdictions identify exactly where broadband expansion is needed. Uh, because right now, we don't actively know where it actually exists and where it doesn't exist. We don't have the information, we don't have exact maps of where ISPs actually have their lines in the ground or on poles. Um, and then when you get into fixed wireless, um, which is invisible, uh, you, we really don't know exactly where that covers and where it meets the minimum FCC standards to, to qualify for, uh, being covered for broadband.
John?
Yes.
Uh, you know Chop Tank's in the motions of trying to do broadband. Okay, and you brought this company Talky. I think they, weren't they in Worcester County now? I believe so.
Talk, well, yeah, they're out of Chester Town. Um, I don't know if they actually have any cable plant in the ground in Worcester yet.
How, how, how are they going to decide who serves what areas? Is it going to be like a franchise type of situation like you said Comcast and MediaCom? Or is there going to be competition amongst these companies to, to serve?
I think that both could happen. Uh, I think this could bring in competition, um, for existing ISPs and Talky does not exist in Wycomico County specifically. Um, it, it could also require a franchise agreement between Talky and Wycomico County as well.
But it seems, it seems like it would be, um, a lot better if they, um, when I say work together, I don't mean work together to put it in because they probably wouldn't do that, but, um, it would get done faster if they would, if different areas worked, these two companies or three companies or whatever they were, so they wouldn't be, um, doing the same thing over again.
Right, I agree. And that's, uh, we're, we're kind of taking this stance of we're being very mindful of, of looking out for duplicate efforts even on our part. Uh, and then, uh, in terms of funding from the federal government to the state government. Now, I do know through this Phase One FCC grant, they, they have these bills. These were funded or subsidized, so, um, the bills on the map, according to Talky, those will happen. Um, they have certain timelines they have to meet with each of these. And they have to, in terms of how they do, what order they do them in, they have requirements that they have to meet towards, towards the right. Um, will it lay over existing ISPs such as Comcast or, uh, MediaCom in our county? Could possibly be that.
Would it be a situation that the race is on to either get there first?
Um, it could be. I think, uh, you know, the free market and, um, competition coming into play could be, uh, positive. Right now, the citizens of the county have very limited, um, choice between who do they have to get their internet service provider from. So that certainly could be the case.
John, can we get this, uh, Matt, can we get that in electronic circumstances? enlarge it if it's not hard to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it to Laura. I already have it electronic.
Yeah.
And then you can, you can really zoom in and see exactly what roads and so forth that those census blocks or the shaded areas cover. Now, we'll tell you, that's a black and white version. The, the version I'll send you is, is colored, but the color, the coloring on the, the blocks is irrelevant. It's just there to distinguish, uh, different buildouts.
And I don't know if I'm interpreting this correctly or not, but it still says a lot of unserved portions of the county.
They're, they're very well, maybe so, yeah.
John?
Yes.
Now, I was just, I was just wondering, have you, have you spoken with Chop Tank and, and thinking back to when Chop Tank came in and out with us on Broadband? Two years ago?
Yes, absolutely.
And so they already have the optics laid. And so that was my understanding because that would be.
Yeah, I, I think what they're, when they do begin their expansion or, or their buildout of their network, they are going to utilize their existing infrastructure they have with their electricity utility, the best western land. That's how I was explaining to me.
And then how do the hotspots, how do they work in these, in these areas that don't currently have broadband?
In terms of like a, a mobile hotspot? Um, those are, uh, I believe those are Verizon devices, if anybody uses those. Um, they're basically like a cell device. Um, like if you were to take your cell phone and, and turn it into a hotspot, they act similar to that. They just connect up to whoever, uh, your, your cell provider is, whether it's Verizon or AT&amp;T. Create that connection and they actually have a little Wi-Fi radio in them, so creates a little Wi-Fi network locally. And then it creates a, a backbone connection to the, the service provider, uh, whoever that might be.
So if I'm traveling down Minaco Road, I can't get cell phone reception past, definitely not Triask and then past Quantico, it drops.
Okay.
So would a hotspot work past that?
Um, right, yeah. It's usually, you can pretty much, uh, bank on if your cell phone doesn't work, the hotspot probably doesn't work now. If you have Verizon, uh, maybe they don't have coverage in that area. If you have AT&amp;T, it could be a different coverage. So an AT&amp;T hotspot may work or another provider. Uh, it just could be a lack of coverage by that particular provider. Maybe they don't have a tower in that area and somebody else does.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Hannah? John, thanks for being here.
Sure.
Um, I would hope the public in general realize that you're not responsible for the county's, um, internet service countywide. There's, you are the director of our IT department in the county, which means that your responsibility is to take care of all the internet within the county structure itself and preference as well. So I appreciate you being here. Uh, my question in light, in light of that would be, can you suggest the county, I know you've been talking with the tri-county council, Greg Page, very closely. And we appreciate your input on that as well. What, who should the council or the county executives, who should we be working with to make sure that we're getting the best benefit of the funding that's coming in as well as the, the, um, the infrastructure, the ISPs, et cetera? Do you, do you have an answer to that? So I mean, we should be talking to you physically.
Well, I think it's, uh, there's probably multiple points of contact. Certainly the tri-county council involved in there and coordination with, um, Worcester County, Somerset County is important. Because this really is a, a regional effort, not just something that affects Wycomico in particular. I think it's important to, um, stay in contact with state delegates and particularly these two bills, um, that we provided you today. Uh, there are certainly some, uh, some, um, happenings there that I think could benefit us. Uh, and, and in particular, you know, how, this is such a, a new thing and it's, it's changing drastically. Something I learned, uh, you know, three weeks ago might be totally different, uh, and three weeks from now, so. I think with broadband, it's, it's such an expensive endeavor and it takes, uh, a lot of money to put cable in the ground or string it across poles. Um, you're talking typically between $80,000 to $100,000 per mile to install cable plant. So obviously, at the federal and state level, that's where that level of funding is going to need to come from. That's quite a bit of money for the county to, uh, to really try to subsidize themselves, so. I think there's also some, some aspects at the state level. And we've had some conversation, uh, with, at the Mago level and the IT facility affiliate as to how that process works between the state and the county. Do we, how much burden can the local jurisdictions handle when it comes to building out networks? It's, uh, it's time consuming. And if, if you put a lot of emphasis on the local level, you're talking about creating, um, positions, uh, to manage this. The, the funding, the projects, the oversight of it. So, um, again, that's a, a burden on the county. We don't have that particular infrastructure in place right now to be able to handle that.
And there's also, of course, Maryland broadband that, you know, we develop a relationship with. From what I understand, Worcester, I believe Somerset as well, have already developed some type of, uh, a, a mental understanding or contracts, actual contracts. You get the, you know, expansion of broadband in their communities. Um, and I don't, I don't, we're doing that in Wycomico County. I'm not aware of that, John.
Well, you're, you're correct. We haven't entered into any contracts with anybody to expand. And the reason being is we've wanted to sit back a little bit and make sure that we weren't jumping in headfirst. And then come to find out that there was another avenue of expansion that was in the works or going to happen. And I think in this case, what we discussed today, in particular, the FCC, um, grant. Uh, that, there's a significant amount of buildout that's going to happen in Wycomico County, um, with that grant.
And how, how, how is that going to happen? Is that going to be through Maryland broadband? This, this Talky Communications, I can't tell you how many people are shaking their heads. Uh, this, this one organization got 99% of the funding.
Correct.
In state of Maryland, I don't even, I'm not so sure how qualified they really are. But here they have it. And so this means that Wycomico County is going to have to deal with a, you know, a company in Chester Town? When we have the, you know, when we have the Chop Tank Cooperative that already does, councilwoman actually said, they already have lines in the ground?
Right. And, and I know Chop Tank, well, first to address Talky, um, I do know in my conversation with them that they, I feel that they have the expertise. They are, everyone that's involved in our organization has been involved in this business for years in their prior employment. So they do have the expertise. They, they, they have already built, uh, significant networks, um, in, uh, Kent County, I believe, Queen Anne's County. So I'm not exactly sure. I don't know the details of why the FCC awarded them in particular. I don't know. Maybe it's because, um, they felt that, uh, the smaller company was a good place to, um, create some competition. I don't know. Maybe, uh, I do know that Talking with Talky, they, their business plan is, um, they do have in the works of expanding their equipment that they need to do these buildouts. And the majority. works of expanding their equipment that they need to do these build outs, and the majority of it, of the construction itself is going to be outlets, which would be, I would think, what a typical company would be doing with this, to put the K-1 ground or string it across poles.
I know that when I heard about the Quanico build out through Tri-County Council, I don't think anyone here knew. I'm not so sure, I don't think this council, this broadband is coming to have it in Quantico. And think about this, the Board of Education that needs this build out, and what are we supposed to, are we supposed to be coordinating our efforts with the Board of Education? Because I know that they've received funding from, probably federal funding, to enhance their educational abilities, which I think would probably be, broadband would be a high priority to them. So where, this is kind of like for the council as a whole, how are we going to pound, what should we do to coordinate our efforts as a body to make it happen?
I think that's something, like I said, what we're doing right now is, we're gathering all the information we can by talking with all the partners involved. I think that's the first step you have to take on it. We do actively communicate with Maryland Broadband Cooperative, we have a good working relationship with them. The county does do business with them. I speak with them probably at least on a monthly basis regarding county projects and also projects that they have persuaded in the county outside of the government itself. So we've been aware for some time about those two projects on the west side of the county. They are, those two projects, in particular, they're fiber optic projects, they're kind of what we call middle mile projects, where Maryland Broadband isn't actually the ISP that actually provides the internet service to the end user. They're kind of providing the roadway, so to speak, that any ISP that would like to utilize that infrastructure and wants to, whether it be an existing ISP in Quantico or somebody from outside, they can then lease those, that fiber off them and provide service to those households.
And Maryland Broadband is making that investment without even having an ISP to close the funding?
Well, I don't know if they have one or not. I think that's between them and the members of their co-op. They have, I believe, upwards to a hundred different members, many of those ISVs. So maybe they do, maybe they don't. But that investment was, I believe it was funded through the office of Maryland Broadband and the Department's Office to figure that out. So again, I just don't know the answer to that, whether they have or not.
John, were you able to work with the public school system when they received their additional funding for broadband? Do we still have kids in Triask and hotspots that can't access the internet?
Well, that's really a board of ed on topic. It's not something that the county IT department necessarily get involved with. So I think that would be something they would need to give an answer on.
Okay, thanks.
John, as I was, you keep talking about wireless technology and it looks like even the radio towers now, you know, are somewhat, going to be obsolete because they're putting transmitters on on telephone poles in different cities for no use. Why would, why would these companies invest in broadband where they have to run cables and wires if the technology for wireless is so advanced and advancing more so all the time, I guess?
Well, I see your point. Even though the wireless, in terms of fixed wireless broadband, which I consider satellite, which is advancing, but it's not quite there in terms of speed yet, there are a lot of applications, even when you're streaming video and stuff like that, that don't necessarily work very well over satellite internet service. And then fixed wireless, where you put basically a receiver on your house and a provider, let's say Uso, for example, has access points on towers throughout an area, that's how you receive the fixed wireless. Wireless, it's coming along, but it's not nearly, it doesn't nearly have the capacity that fiber optic has. So I think that's why cable in the ground and stringing across poles is still the priority right now, to get the speeds that are needed, people to meet even the FCC requirement.
Yeah, what's interesting about that, I think that's a good question, but you talk about the capacity, and of course fiber optics gives you more capacity, but we're also talking about serving very remote rural areas where capacity isn't the, that's not the need, you know, just trying to get basic access is the need. You know, and wireless seems so advanced, in Europe, that's how they, that is how they serve all their rural areas. It's all, they have these little satellite, you know, wireless hubs all over the place with people having high-speed internet.
Right, and if, I think what you're referencing is, if you're referencing like 5G and what you see advertised on television, and particularly 5G, which is, is only located in certain cities across the United States, and actually within those cities, it's only in certain blocks, because one of the problems with 5G, if you call it a problem with 5G, is that it requires such a density of access points, and that's why you see those, they kind of, they try to make them blend in with the utility poles and the light posts and so forth, but it does require a density of access points to make that level of speed work. And in Quantico, I don't think you would, if 5G were to come here, probably the only place you could initially set it up would be in downtown Salisbury where you can put the number of access points. There are certainly hot button issues with 5G as well. Some places don't want to see those things put on their street corners, they don't want those devices in their neighborhoods on their poles. There's, I guess there's two sides to that issue, but in terms of satellite, I do know that part of the Phase One FCC grant, SpaceX was awarded a significant amount of grant funding to build out their satellite internet service network. There are some other providers out there, like HughesNet did also provide, but I think SpaceX received a significant amount of funding. Now, I don't know how much of that is going to be coverage in our region of the United States, I think a lot of it was more of the West Coast, but that's still a, an evolving technology in terms of internet service via satellite. I'm familiar with it firsthand. It definitely has a ways to go in terms of the throughput capacity, even to service just one household, particularly when you're talking about people streaming multiple televisions during the video for school. It's just not quite there yet. There's some latency issues with the amount of time it takes, the data to transmit from your house up to space and then back, so it's an evolving technology.
5G is, from what I understand, is not what you think it is by seeing all the advertisements with that certain vendor on TV.
That's correct.
I've read a lot of concerns about 5G as well. But my thought too was what Mr. Cannon brought up. We had Maryland Broadband at the Tri-County Council about a year ago, they did a presentation, so I was surprised when Talky was chosen, because Maryland Broadband is right in town, and they have a consortium of ISP providers to work with, so I was wondering why they were chosen.
Well, it's interesting you bring that up. Talky is one of their cooperative members. So I believe that with this build out, with the FCC grant, Talky is going to utilize some of the existing fiber. A great deal of the backbone that already exists in Moncombe County, down the major corridors. There is fiber optic and Maryland Broadband Cooperative, I believe, owns that. So Talky, their plan is to, as I'm told, is to lease capacity on those backbones, and they'll build out those locations in Moncombe off that backbone. It's, I would kind of think of it as a tree where the main trunk is Maryland Broadband Cooperative and other entities that do own the backbone fibers throughout our county, and then Talky comes in and builds out those branches, the service, those areas on that.
So Talky will be working with Maryland Broadband?
Yes, there is coordination going on.
Okay, that's good. Do we have any more questions or comments? Mr. Hayes?
Just to be clear, so this is the forty-nine million dollars you're talking about, this is not local taxpayer dollars, it's federal money coming in?
That's correct.
And then this is the words that went out, how many of you mentioned, middle mile or last mile, this is more, they're connecting homes, I guess that was the intent of it, is to try to reach these last homes, right?
That's correct, yeah. The forty-three million that Talky was awarded was purely a federal grant funding. And the last time we met, and I thank you for being with our constituent that time, you brought up the figures of about a hundred thousand per mile, and then saying it's significant, it's got to be done.
Yeah, it's expensive. Now, one thing to keep in mind, I will say about a lot of these grants, and specifically at the state level, is these grants, they don't cover the full cost of building these networks out. Matter of fact, in reality, as I understand it, talking to ISPs, they probably only cover in the range of thirty to forty percent of the actual cost to put the cable on the ground, to string it across poles. There's a lot of, there's a lot of planning that goes, that has to take place before the construction even happens. When ISP wants to build their network out, they basically need to put boots on the ground everywhere. They need to see exactly where everything's going. These companies, they don't own the poles that they might need to use, so they have to get right-of-way on those, they have to get permitting. Some of these poles may not be ready to handle additional cable or their equipment, so there's expenses in making them ready to put additional cable on it. So there's a lot of planning and engineering and boots on the ground that goes into these projects even before a piece of trench is dug and these cables put in the ground. And a lot of these grants don't fund any of that. So I think what we all have to be aware is that these companies, they're private companies, they have business models, and they have certain thresholds they have to meet in order to make a project feasible and profitable down the road at some point for them. And I think they look at projects and they look at the grant opportunities, and they have to make a decision, even if I do receive this grant funding, does this project still, is it still something that we can sell to our shareholders and our stakeholders that it makes sense to do business-wise? So there's two sides to this, and we are learning a lot about this, that's good, that we'll talk about and gather information.
So you said that they may pay up to forty percent on these grants, and who would pay the other sixty percent?
Well, that's, that would have to come from the ISP, or if there was a partnership between a local jurisdiction and an ISP.
I was going to say, so is Robert who's going to pay the rest of the money?
Yeah, right, they'll eventually pass it on, they're looking to get their return on their investment over a certain timeframe, and, you know, each of them have their own metrics today that they need to meet, so they're not all the same, but you're right, subscribers will eventually pay for that. But in the construction phase, you know, that money's got to be fronted by somebody, and most of the time it is the ISP.
And then when we met, there was some discussion that our county IT office may have some involvement in these grants, is that so?
No, at this time, no, we have no involvement.
Okay, so that question wasn't accurate, so thank you. Mr. Holloway, do you have another comment?
I have, just a comment. Years ago, all power lines and phone lines used to be above ground, and there was a big push back in the sixties, seventies, and eighties to vary them up. I think they probably wish they were all above ground again.
Right, it is cheaper, it can be significantly cheaper to string across poles than it is putting on the ground. However, then you get into outages in terms of if there's a natural disaster, storms, poles are certainly more, are more, can be damaged easier than something on the ground.
Do you have any more comments for Mr. Holloway, any more questions?
Can I ask one quick question? On the rates that we just mentioned by Mr. Holloway, is there any rate regulation? I don't think the Public Service Commission covers it. I don't know whether any other governmental regulation applies.
I don't know off the top of my head. I can look into that and get you an answer, I just don't know off the top of my head.
PSC does, sir.
All right, any more questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Mullinard, it was a great presentation. Next on the agenda, we have a letter of support proposed for the proposed change to the class B beer, wine, and liquor license for the golf course. Do we have anybody here with us?
They were invited and I didn't go there, just in time.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mullinard. You're welcome. If you would, go ahead and identify yourself to the record and make sure when you speak that you're speaking into the microphones, we've been having problems hearing people.
Good morning. James Allen, Chairman of the Moncombe County Board of License Commissioners.
Alan Hudson, Moncombe County Food License Commissioner.
Christine Tranis, the Initiative to the Board of License Commissioners.
Would you like to start?
Yes, good morning, President, council members. Thank you again for the opportunity to discuss this issue and request the support of the council. If I may summarize from our last meeting, in two thousand five, food and beverage requirement was added to our Class B year wine liquor golf course license. That requirement was not able, golf course operations, that is, was not able to be in compliance with that requirement. They would miss half of the scheduled period for submitting that after the three, six months at a time. The Board of Commissioners has taken it upon ourselves to change that requirement, which is the specific request, to something that would work better for the golf courses' operations. At our last meeting on the thirteenth, I believe it was, the council specifically asked how the state operated golf courses and the specific licenses that were assigned to them. In your letters dated January thirteenth, it indicates that the state of Maryland has fifteen counties that operate golf courses. Thirteen of those fifteen licensed those golf courses as Class B beer, wine, liquor golf courses without a food and beverage requirement. The other two license the operations as cafes and restaurants. But again, it's, it does not mean that the golf courses would not serve food, only that it's not required to meet that ratio.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Allen or the board?
There's a comment, the, you know, this came about, as you said, simply because the golf courses, they just simply don't meet the requirement.
Correct.
In the day, and, you know, I commend you all for being proactive in addressing this, although technically it was an violation of a Class B license, but it's more to follow the rules, just golf courses aren't restaurants, they're golf courses. So, you know, and pretty much the precedent is set across the state. So, you know, and, and pretty much the precedent is, is set across the state, typically, you know, a golf course does not have a food requirement. And I think, I think, you know, a key comment that you made was really at the end there, was that was a comment I was gonna make, this doesn't mean they're not gonna sell food, I mean, they're supposed to sell food and continue business like they're doing now, it's just, you know, in our case, this only applies, correct me, I think it's only two golf courses we have in the county, this actually applies too, but if either one of those are, you know, the food auction, that's not the primary focus of the golf course, you know, they're not major restaurants or anything, they're just, in the day, those kind of snacks you get at the, you know, at the turn or when you get it done. So, so, like I said, if this doesn't mean they're not gonna sell food, it just simply means they're not, they don't have to meet the fifty percent requirement, which they can't do, you just can't do that unless you're primarily a restaurant.
Any more questions or comments, Mr. Cannon?
I'd like to thank board members and Chairman Allen for coming in again today, and we do appreciate you bringing this, as Councilman McCain says so often, we find boards and commissioners who are trying to do everything to over-regulate industry and create the burden on the county and the businesses, I think, but I think one thing that the council should recognize is that we do depend on you and we depend on you and your expertise to advise us as to what is in the best interest and what is the safest route to take for our community. And we applaud you for coming in and sharing that with us. I, I don't wanna second guess what your recommendation might be, because I feel that you're, you're spot on. I said before, it's an adequate bill, I think you had suggested before that if we go this route, that you're gonna have too many people, drunk drivers on the road, well, no matter what the license might dictate, you can't dictate what the players may or may not do just because, you know, there's a quota of maybe fifty, two to one on beer and, and food. Whoever may consume that alcohol isn't, when it doesn't and will not abide by that guideline, this is just simply a guideline that's set up for the, for the golf courses. So it's not, it's not like apples and wine, just to think you're gonna solve one situation with another. That being said, I think primarily what our concern is, is that the law that's out there matches the intent. And the golf courses, I don't think this venue is proper to, is the proper venue to set this up, it's not Sherwood Stadium where people sit and watch the game, it's not a concert where you go to listen to music, this is simply a venue where people go out and spend three to four hours outdoors playing sports. So I think that always should be taken into consideration, but thank you again for being here and taking your time.
Good morning, Mr. Cannon, any more comments?
Have you, have you, have you had any opposition to this? Many citizens reached out to you, they opposed to this state enabling legislation?
We have not had any opposition, no, they did not reach out asking for assistance for an option, it was initiated by the board.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Holloway?
Has there been any other situations, not golf courses, but any other situations with any other businesses not being able to meet their fifty-one percent on their, on their alcohol, food issue?
Well, from time to time, there are, and, and some of it is driven by seasons, that we've had a license fee, not make the F and B one or two months of the six, but predominantly they, they wouldn't meet that requirement because, see some of those, that's a little urgent.
Mr. Chairman, might I chime in on this one?
Can you move the mic towards you?
Over the years, when we find an establishment not making the F and B, selling more alcohol than food, we give them a three, we, we have given them three recording periods, the recording period is six months, and we send them a letter reminding them you have not major F and Bs, you're selling more alcohol than food, giving them a chance to get their food sales back up. Usually after the third recording period, they still can have to, that we give them the option to change to a tavern license, either giving up the distilled spirits, becoming a beer wine only tavern, or keeping the distilled spirits, becoming a beer wine liquor tavern. The difference is, besides the cost, is a beer wine liquor tavern, nobody under twenty-one can be on the premise and they have to have a seating for a hundred and forty, set forth by fire and marshals, students. The beer wine tavern doesn't have a seating capacity and any age can be on that premise. So basically, they have to change up the whole concept of their business, and in most cases, the times that the restaurant had to change their class of license, it pretty much killed their food sales.
Holloway?
So changing this, now I understand what you're coming up on this, I understand how hard it is for them to probably meet this requirement, but changing this, if they decide to keep the liquor, does that mean that no one under twenty-one can be on the golf course?
If they choose to license the golf course under the tavern license, that would be correct, but if they choose not to license the golf course, then anybody playing golf could not be enjoying an alcoholic beverage on the golf course and we do not recommend, we do not allow BYOBs or golfers to suddenly bring their own beer.
Let me, let me back up, I didn't understand that. So they are going to, if they choose the one license, that means that no one under twenty-one can be on the golf course, is that correct?
Yes.
Then it would be a tavern license.
Right, right. So I, I know a lot of families that live around these golf courses and there are a lot of people under twenty-one that like to golf and they go out there in large groups, so it would be a shame if they weren't allowed to golf. And then I wonder who would monitor this to make sure that they weren't on the golf course if they chose that specific license? So I got a feeling that under twenty-one athletes would still be out there.
Yes, I agree as well.
I think the high schools have golf, golf leagues.
Tournaments, yeah.
And I'm pretty sure they probably give some of the local golf courses to play.
Okay, any more questions or comments? All right, no more questions or comments, do we have a consensus on sending this letter of support for the proposed change?
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
The other concern that the council asked, had, was how the county Executive Office dispositioned, and in your package, the date of January, I think there's an email, but a formal letter will follow with this support.
Okay, were there any other comments that you'd like to make?
No, sir.
Before we get this consensus, Mr. McCain?
I knew you said the letter of support.
You supported, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Holloway? Mr. Cannon? Mr. Hastings? Ms. Ackley?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll prepare this letter and make sure that we get the letter of support from the Executive Office. Thank you all very much, and you have a good one.
Thank you so much, I wanted to pull back.
You too. Next on the agenda is the letter of support for House Bill seven twelve for the County Board of Education, student transportation vehicles, is Mr. Desmond Hughes here?
He's participating on Zoom.
He is, okay. I see he's sitting down there.
Hey, Mr. Hughes, we're ready for you, if you can unmute yourself, please. Yes, but now your, your thing has disappeared, like now it has me on two of these, I don't know why, that should be your laptop.
Is he talking?
No, he's on just like. Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
For me, okay, um, okay, we're ready for you.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Hughes, can you go ahead and introduce yourself and lead this discussion?
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, hi.
Hi, good morning, council members, Desmond Hughes, Director of Transportation with Wycomico County Public Schools. Again, we come before you this, this morning to ask for a letter of support, much like you gave last year. The bill is the same bill in the same format that it was presented last year, it did pass in the House chamber, but due to the abrupt session ending due to the pandemic, it did not make it over to the Senate, and so therefore, we will be, it was, it was prefiled by Delegate Anerton again this year, it is expected to be fast-tracked through the House since it passed last year in that chamber, but he is requesting a letter of support from Wycomico County. I would mention that last year, when we presented, testified in the Ways and Means Committee, the committee liked the bill, liked the legislation so much, until it was expanded from just Wycomico County as it was originally presented, and that actually expanded statewide to incorporate all twenty-four jurisdictions. So we look forward again to it being fast-tracked to the House and, and approved or passed in the Senate as well. I stand for any questions that you may have.
Okay, do we have any questions for Mr. Hughes? Mr. Hastings?
I'm looking at the current bill online and it doesn't mention Wycomico County, is there another way that it determines which jurisdiction this is?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your question.
I'm looking online right now at currently at House Bill seventy-two, which I see is just Delegate Anerton, it does not currently specify, it doesn't look like it shows any particular type of, it doesn't specify Wycomico County, so theoretically, I'm doing a quick read, but theoretically, this would be statewide, is that the, I'm assuming that wasn't the intended purpose, but maybe I'm reading it wrong.
Yeah, as I said, last year, when we presented in its original format, it was just exclusively, exclusively for Wycomico County, as it's been, it was modified in the Ways and Means Committee last year and refiled again this year, but this year to include the entire state as it was modified last year.
Do we have any more questions or comments for Mr. Hughes? All right, one more time, any more questions? All right, this time we're gonna do a consensus for the letter, Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Hastings?
I generally follow whatever Mr. James would pitch as his, your question.
Mr. Ms. Ackley?
Yes.
Mr. McCain?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Is that a yes? So we have a yes for you, Ann, Mr. Hastings, Mr. Holloway?
I'm good, I'll follow.
Okay, I'll follow.
I'm good.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hughes, do you have any more comments? Okay, all right, Ms. Burley? I got a consensus on that letter.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, letter of support for proposed change to the state education article on the budget and reporting requirements for Wycomico County, Board of Ed, Ms. Ackley, are you gonna lead this?
So, so this, this legislation is already state legislation, this would be a bill correction. The other counties with an executive form of government have had this since the inception of the executive form, Wycomico was formed their county executive government after the state bill, so this would be adding us to the already existing state legislation.
All right, did you submit a bill of legislation to all council members?
Yes, it's in the big book.
Okay, and do we have any questions on this?
So this is basically a housekeeping measure, correct?
Correct.
Okay, can we have the, I'd like to ask that question to the Board of Ed folks, if you consider this the housekeeping measure, since this is already being done?
This is really for the citizens, I mean, we can have a public hearing to see it.
I'm asking, they're here today to address this, so my question's to them.
If you would, if you please identify yourself for the record.
Donna Hanlon, Superintendent of Schools. I am not familiar with this being just a housekeeping measure, I made my comments earlier today, there are, I believe, Jesse, five other, five other counties in the state that have some sort of requirement, but they vary from county to county in terms of what is requested. My point is, I'm not sure that, in fact, I know the legislation isn't necessary, part of it is already in the law.
Jesse, recontrol, it is in the law for Anaron, yeah. This is, this is Anaron's company.
Prince George, Montgomery, Howard, so, for every book.
Was that?
Prince George, Howard, Montgomery, and Cecil, are also in every book.
So all of those county executives on the bill?
Again, they're ordered differently, they are, the different requirements, your system to system, the one that is most similar to what you all are, Mrs. Ackley's proposing is, is the amount.
All right, Mr. Holloway?
I guess, why are you opposed to transparency, I don't understand that.
I am not opposed to transparency, just the opposite, all I'm saying is that these reports already exist.
Well, you handed out, you handed out this detailed transition report, a period, all it has here is the name of the company, I won't mention the company, and the amount has nothing with our work involved, I mean, supplies and materials. Yeah, in my experience in the past of trying to get information from the Board of Ed, it's the last time I asked for information, I was told I could come to the office, sit in front of the computer, but I did not print out the information that I wanted, or you did not print out the information, I did not get copies of it, and it just seems like it's not anything, you know, you don't, if somebody asks questions, there's no answer sometimes, so, I don't know how anybody can go against transparency, whether it's the Board of Ed, the County Council, the Executive's Office, or any other organization in Wycomico County.
Mrs. Dolph?
Michael Dolph, Chief Finance and Operations Officer, and I just wanna reiterate what Dr. Hanlon has, has already said, by this going forward, it's gonna be very redundant in that the same information is already located on our website for the entire community of the city. And also, at the same time, we already come to the council anytime that we have to ask for a transfer between categories because it's what Comar says that we have to do.
This is not to, this is not to cause any kind of contention, we are simply wanting Wycomico County to have sustainability as the other counties with executive form, it's just the equality of what that will put us there in the legislation that's already existing, it's just a bill correction.
He said we, he said we, we are requesting.
We, the citizens of the county.
The citizens are requesting this? Aren't you requesting this?
I am bringing this up that we are not added to the already existing legislation, it makes it clear that citizens will receive more transparency, I represent citizens, not the government.
Right, but you keep saying we, but it will not create, it will not create more transparency, transparency exists.
Let me add, there was a, is it, Mr. Davis? With the, the new transparency, like what Joe was saying, I'm looking at, it says upkeep of grounds, would it go specifically say exactly what? Would it go specifically say exactly what upkeep of grounds would do?
Yeah.
We did initially add more detail, Mr. Holliday and Davis, but we ran into some confidentiality issues with contract pricing, so we had to kind of keep a high level, that's why it's the way it is.
It is things confidential, that's what that is.
Can you use one?
Completely understood, we do the same thing in the county.
Well, I, I can always agree with transparency requests, but I don't believe there should be, we should create such redundancies as this is suggesting. And we could, we could send a letter to the state requesting that every single check that the Department of Education writes has to come across this table first. I got transparency, we want transparency. It was really being efficient, effective, I think, has allowed them to do their job as they're doing. And I've been on the portal, I do know that there's, if you need the information, it's out there, and they've stated this as well. I also, you know, I bother us being sitting here having discussions about COVID, how, what we're going to do about virtual learning, as opposed to a letter about trying to create a redundancy in budget requirements. I don't think it's necessary. I also have a concern, I have concerns that the letter that was put in the briefbook has two signature lines, one is John Posoda's, the acting county executive, and one is the president of the council. I like that format, but we don't have a letter of endorsement from the county executive at all. And the county executive is not in favor of this. So I don't see how we're going to be sending the letter to the state of Maryland, and especially the fact that the letter suggests that he's in favor of this, and he's not.
How do we know he's not?
Well, I talked to him yesterday.
Well, we need to hear it.
He didn't, I didn't hear that.
Well, I, I'm sure, I don't know how, well, if you want to, then we'll table this, we'll have this discussion in two weeks. But I just spoke to him yesterday, and he said very clearly that he was not in favor of this. And he's had conversations with the Councilman at Ackley, and I think he shared that with you as well.
No, he did not. He's never shared that with me, but I mean, that that's how he feels. He can let citizens know he's not in favor of further transparency.
I'm not so sure, you can put words in his mouth all you want, but the real act of reality is his perception of what this intends to do. He feels it's unnecessary.
Gene Malone, Chairman of the Wycomico County School Board. I think we're very transparent as we stand now, but the issue to me with this whole transaction or discussion is, it's based on transparency, yet the way this is being handled isn't very transparent. The way to have handled this would have been to say, hey, we have some, a resolution we'd like to send to the legislature, so can we talk to you about it and have a work group? Couple of council members, couple of board members, superintendent's team, and talk through this and see if it's necessary. This was not ever proposed to us, other than being notified on Friday that it would be on the work session agenda. So, in the interest of transparency, it's ironic that the whole presentation wasn't very transparent. So, those would be my comments as Chairman of the School Board. We appreciate the collaboration, we have a strong partnership, but I like to work through these issues in smaller groups, and then you bring it forward, and it's up to you what you want to do. Thank you.
The meeting is like, if the school were being spoken, and they allow comment, or citizen comment, I think it would be a good topic.
Actually, and I think that was pretty well put by Mr. Malone, I mean, I certainly agree with that. The, and also, this was at its origin, it's council people. You know, this was not on our original briefbook, and this got added, I mean, probably to us as well. So, I mean, I don't know, just really, I haven't, I haven't had a good time to reach any kind of comfort on the rule.
Right, and there was another item that we were going to put on, and we, by another council member, then we were asked to take it off, so it does happen occasionally when some things are added on. And I, maybe they thought it was a rush for time. Ms. Ackley, or Mr. Hastings was next.
I was just going to say, maybe the thing to do is just for us to take another, you know, I think we've talked about, if I remember right, we talked about, pulled about this last year. It would be nice to maybe have, you know, just like Mr. Malone, since we suggest, maybe have approval, figure this out over the next year, if there's ways that we can make things more transparent without being, getting to a level of putting ourselves in risk of exposing too much information, I mean, it's, you know, just like parts of our, you know, our meetings are not for the full public consumption. Same thing with other information, so transparency is a kind of a devilish there. But maybe that's something that we could do in the long term, but.
And this is Ms. Ackley?
And this may be something that the citizens need to approach the state legislators, whether this is something they want to make an attraction.
No, I have, I have, as a natural representative, I honestly have had one person come up to me and say, hey, you know, you guys need to have more transparency or reporting tradition. I haven't had that. And I think all of us would prefer to see transparency, and I think everyone's trying to do their best. And Mr. Cannon brought up a good point. I'm not confident that I know which way Mr. Posoda would go, but, I don't know. I haven't talked to him, I don't know if he would support this or not. I would like to see Peter, or Mr. Holliday?
There's no law ruling says he has to support it for us to send it. You know, there's, I mean, in the past, that's what we've always tried to do, you know, to get cooperation from the county executive's office, but there is no, there's nothing written anywhere that I know about. Is that like Mr. Taylor or not, that we have to have county executive sign on for support of the letter?
As far as I'm aware, that's not needed.
Okay, so the council can send the letter if they want to without Posoda or the county executive. Mr. Posoda can send the letter without the council if he wants to. So I don't see that that's anything to make a difference on whether to have a consensus vote for this or not.
Well, it does make a difference, and, you know, in the General Assembly, if you don't have, if you have anything to send the letter for any type of proposed legislation going to Annapolis, if you don't have coordination between the legislative body, the executive body, your own county, they're not going to look at it twice.
John, this is, this is already a bill. All this is, is adding, it has, as I said before, but, and I understand what you're saying, and I agree with you on that fact, but there's nothing said that we can't send it anyway. So it might not go anywhere when it gets there, but there's nothing written that says that we can't send a letter without cooperation from the county executive.
Any more comments? All right, I'm going to ask for a consensus, Mr. Cannon? Mr. Hastings?
Yeah.
Ms. Ackley?
Yeah.
Mr. McCain?
Yeah.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Holliday here. And Chair Bojewski. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So how does another one lead? Because we'll just set a precedent now where council members are individually opposing the letter when we send it. So, we all write the ones that all support it, write opposed on the letter?
Thank you, Reverend, I'm in line of opposition. You can write, you can write anything on that letter you want, if you have permission, has that?
All right, with that said.
I would like to say, on the letters, Mr. President, I would like to say that any letters that come in the briefbook should not have the county executive's signature line together with the president's signature line, unless we have a letter of endorsement from the executive branch.
I agree with that, and I think that should be on all matters, thank you. Any more discussion before we move to lunch? Right, at this time, we're going to go ahead and break for lunch, and then come back and discuss the water sewer. Okay, this time we'd like to reconvene with the work session and start with the discussion of water sewer, the study by George Miles and Burr, Ms. Catherine McAllister, and Chief Vice President, and Project Manager, and Mr. Peter Bosick, Professional Engineer, Executive Vice President. So if you guys would come up, then identify yourselves for the record.
I'm Captain McAllister with George Moss up here.
Peter Bosick with George Moss up here.
Thank you, welcome. You can lead the discussion.
Okay, so we just wanted to start quickly, just give an overview to refresh our memories from our last time we presented. So the study we're doing, the Wycomico County Water and Sewer Master Plan, it's a master plan to outline the approach to provide safe drinking water and clean wastewater discharge to all residents in Wycomico County. The overall goal for the study is to figure out how to best serve all county residents, and to look at several aspects, including the public health, protection of the environment, and the economic well-being of all citizens. So there are three main focus areas that you'll find, once we're done the report, the draft report. You'll see we're going to outline, the first one is just your engineering side of it, which is the technical water sewer infrastructure and alternatives on how to provide that. The second thing we're going to look at is the governing agency programs for management of the infrastructure. So we'll look at other examples throughout Maryland and around that have programs for managing infrastructure. And then the third is we'll develop a financial management structure and model to install, operate, and maintain the infrastructure. So I also wanted to go back just real quick to one of our discussions in the October work session, where we discussed with you guys your existing 2017 land use map. I don't know if you have that with your agenda packet, but we did provide that last time. And the importance of this map is it really let us focus on what the growth areas are for Wycomico County. So if you look here, you know, any area around Cavern, around Pittsville, Willards, the rural villages, Parsonsburg, White Haven, you'll see there are colored areas, and that's the growth areas. Those are the areas where we're looking at to serve some type of central water sewer system, or to connect those.
That is the land use map?
That's, yep, the adopted 2017.
It's like, use map seven dash two, I see a solid, but thank you.
Yep, in your complaint. So something to keep in mind is anything in white currently is not being considered a growth area. So it will stay on onsite septic and wells. It will be under the jurisdiction of the Health Department as it is now, and there are large lots out there, so the thought process for most of these areas is they have enough area to hopefully replace their septic system if fails in that. You're also going to have exceptions, obviously, but the goal for this study really is we focus on that and focus on those growth areas. So we have done some density calculations based on this, and you have about 17,000 parcels right now that have existing structures that are all on private systems, that are on septic and wells, so that's 17,000. So if you look at these areas for growth, that actually comprises about 70% of that 17,000. So about 12,000 of these existing parcels will be, there'll be a plan to serve them via central water sewer. So that's 12,000, so 70% will get served. The other 30%, which is about 5,000, are in the white areas. They're not in any of the growth areas. So another interesting thing that we saw is if you take the 12,000 that are really part of the study, about 80% of those are bordering municipal systems. So 80%, which is about 9,500 of these existing parcels are right up next to either the City of Salisbury, Fruiland, Willers, Pissel, one of the major municipalities that have a water wastewater plant. So there's only about 2,500 parcels that are in rural villages and do not, are not nearby any existing system that's already currently with a discharge permit exists. So we're considering those 2,500 parcels sort of county-sponsored areas. You know, you wouldn't be negotiating or coordinating with a municipality. It would sort of be their county areas already, and know, define municipal entity.
What color are they in?
These are actually rural villages mainly, some of them are green. So you've got Parsonsburg, yep.
Alville, Quantico, Eden, and Hiaskin. Hiaskin, White Haven. Yeah, and White Haven. So those are what we call the rural villages.
Now, you mentioned the 12,000 in that transition area. That's assuming that they do want to tie into city municipal?
Well, the ones that tie into existing city municipals, about 9,500. The 12,000 include the rural villages as well, about 9,500. So of those 9,500, we're seeing from a technological point of view and a practical point of view, that looks like that's the best option. You know, where they're located, in positions in the cities which already have the treatment systems there, the water treatment. You know, what need, what's left to be done is the pipes in the ground. You don't have to build new treatment facilities. Or, or those treatment facilities will get built within those municipalities in the normal, or, you know, the normal course of things, what is time to review.
Do you foresee counties participating in, I mean, I'm just trying to think, I think, does it, Pittsville aren't they pretty much at their limit?
Pittsville's at their limit, right, right, right.
If it does service that, that is surrounding where percent that is, we'd obviously have to expand the existing sewer. You know, you're envisioning the county would be the funding mechanism for them to expand, or we're back to chasing rent dollars and state dollars and all the, all the above?
All the above. Yeah, primarily, I think the county would take the lead, I think, in representing those citizens who were perdoned under any other jurisdiction.
Well, we have to be the leader of it, because we're the ones that provide these surrounding county residents with public service.
And when we get into the management structure, whether you have an urban services commission, whether you have a separate water waste department within your county government, whether you're getting into privatization, or whether you create another branch, governmental branch within your government, like a sanitary district type of entity, you know. They would probably be, you know, in between you, county council, and dealing with the municipalities. I use directly whatever brand. So this part of the study, when you come up to, you know, what type of management structure, what's coming in focus is now that we know where you have these seven rural villages, and if you were operating treatment systems in all seven villages, you would have seven treatment systems. Four over there, all three of them, it's the biggest size.
And I think you bring up a good point about the county getting involved, because for many years now, I've been listening to citizens that say they live in the county because they want to be in the county, they don't want to pay double taxes, they don't want to rely on water and sewer, they would prefer that the county get involved somehow, and I'm listening to them. So I'm glad you're bringing this discussion up. Joe, were you ready to say something?
You forgot.
You forgot?
I think you said, like, pizza, you're going to be a variety, each project's going to be different. Each product, Willers might be different than the one.
Absolutely.
You know, you have Sharp County, I think every project you come into will be different. There'll be partnerships, you know, you'll have a lot of, you'll want it to be flexible in each, which is how it wants.
And then there may be like a contract with Maryland, whatever, Services.
M E S, yeah.
M E S.
Yeah.
And the question is, do you want a county council? We're thinking by and large that US County Council is, you need to have, you know, some sort of subset or some subdivision under you to take the lead on this, whose hold responsibilities to understand or assure and manage it. Because again, these are enterprise ones. So whatever gets charged that pays the bill, it should, you know, it's like, should be independent of property taxes.
Right.
It's a utility, just like your phone bill, or your Comcast bill, or your electric bill, or your gas bill. It's just run and managed as a utility, and everybody needs it, it's ready for public health. Obviously, we've got the public health, and we've got to have a good environment. And protect public, so it's that, it's that next level of government.
Right, and it would be a user fee, it's not like the code.
That's always a reason for someone to order a sewer. It's all user fees.
They're starting expenses in that utility.
Now, see, the county may lend itself in terms of bonding, a general obligation bond, which is sort of a full payment credit, including property. But they may also say, look, all these bonds are going to be revenue bonds, which means, again, that gets it more back that only those customers, and the revenue we give to those customers, pay back the bonds.
Right.
And so the county's a little, you know, financially, maybe, I don't know if they're guaranteed, but customers here. guaranteed, but customers here.
And at some point, like Mr. McCain stated, we've gotta get our friends on the state and federal government involved, so that we can find out if there are grants, and whatever services are available.
Well, we know there are grants, and there are different programs, they change from time to time.
Right.
And they have different goals within those programs. You have the Chesapeake Bay program.
Yeah, Joe, he was waiting for you to finish.
You know, the Chesapeake Bay program has the bay restoration funds, they're kinda getting nutrients out of the bay water. That's where people pay sixty dollars a year for a house, and that money goes back in building systems that reduce nutrients. EPA has always had, or these state revolver loan fund for water sewer systems, and that EPA term of money goes to the state, the state doubles that out, so they have another source of money that, that they can give you under the loans or sloans. But, part of that program, they have a loan forgiveness component of that. So, then, that tax has a grant, so that's another avenue, where you can try to get money, you know, and certain loan forgiveness. And then, you got USDA.
Right.
But, that's rural development, you know, so they're interested in rural areas, is their main focus. City Salisbury does not qualify for rural development funds. When county does.
Some of your rural villages.
But, all your rural villages. And then, they look at the incomes quite closely, depending on the property values and immediate household incomes. That tells you how you qualify for, you know, a certain percentages of earnings.
So, we, you know, we've been over this on and on, yeah, thanks for coming today. Are we in agreement that probably, I think, I think we are, that the most damaged area right now, that would probably benefit from having water sewer, would be the three forty-sixth corridor, just outside of Salisbury, what we call the Chesapeake Heights area.
Is that, is that correct?
I would say, you know, just since Dan Lake has done an agreement, that that's number one. Like you say, that's in the hottest category, the highest priority category.
I know they've got houses there that they won't put up in the seventy-sixth. So, I'm not hearing anything about other areas of county, there may be, but I'm not.
That would be, you know, for those reasons, that would be a top, that would be one of the top.
So, that's our top area. What's our next move to get there, to try to do something for it? I mean, we've been meeting on this for several years now, and, and I see that highlighted. Where do we go from here, in the short term? I know it's not gonna be fast, but we need to start somewhere. I mean, we've been talking about it a long time now, so I was just wondering.
For us to complete our study, where we wanna go now, we talked with county executive office department, if we're looking at putting in applications to the state of Maryland, to get a feel from them, to make them, to make an offer in terms of how much grants they can offer. Do raise the line.
Do you, are you the one, who's in charge of finding land to build a plant on? Is that what, is that what we're headed to build a plant, or are we looking to hook up Salisbury? What's, what's thoughts on that?
The category of that carter is in the category where the best technical solution is to go to Salisbury. That's the best technical solution, and ultimately, the least cost solution.
Can that be done without annexation?
That's not an engineering question. But, I could tell you that, you know, we went, what we went through last year with the airport, you know, we discovered that City Salisbury has a charter, and the city's charter dictates, you know, what happened when people went to sewer, they have to be annexed. I think that's the city charter provision, and it's not up to me, you know, to figure out.
So, is, what would be the alternative to looking up Salisbury? Look for a private system, private company to try to get in, or a land, build a plant, go from there, or?
Well, number one, it's gonna be more expensive.
I think we know that.
And, you've gotta figure out how that plays out, you know, is it affordable for the citizens, you know, in that regard? What we've done, right now, we've categorized the total amount of nitrogen load going into the Chesapeake Bay watershed. And with these twelve thousand septic systems that we think are eligible to be connected into municipal sewer systems, they're producing a load of over a hundred twenty thousand pounds a year of nitrogen. And if they're all connected, we can reduce that by two-thirds, and then only produce about a third of that load into the, into the bay water system.
Well, I was just saying, before you, or before you leave that thought. The, we probably need to start having these conversations with City Salisbury being part of this conversation, because, you know, we, you know, we, like I said, we know the, they made that change.
They made that change.
You know, it wasn't that long ago, about, you know, anybody taxing their public water sewer system, you know, has to, to an annexation agreement. But, you know, this kinda changes things. You start talking about this kinda scale, and, I tell you, we didn't.
Scale's important.
Right, scale's important, and you know, as you mentioned, four layer, you know, a lot of people have squads of parts of the county, who'd be like, well, I'm on water sewer, but I don't want to be part of the city.
Correct.
So, we know that.
We hear that.
To successfully do these things, yeah, you gotta have some version of, you know, urban service agreements, or sanitary commissions, or whatever, but at the same time, we got the city a few years ago, trying, they said, well, we're gonna get away from that. So, they, they made a change in their charter to not do that.
Unless they're annexed.
Right, unless they're annexed, but then, we're over here saying, well, we need some type of urban service agreement, or whatever. So, right now, the two primary ways to accomplish this are sort of in conflict with each other. So, I think we need to start having some conversations, to how do we get, how do we marry these two, it's good for everybody, but how do we marry this, you know, without these alternatives?
Yes, I agree, we do need to invite, maybe, the council president, vice president, someone else.
Yeah, yeah, I think they probably, I mean, they need to be hearing what Pete and Kevin are saying.
And something to keep in mind, too, is like we said, you know, City Salisbury doesn't qualify for some of this funding, doesn't qualify for USDA. And county could qualify. So, if there is some type of partnership that can be made, where you guys are paying for some of the infrastructure, you know, maybe they'll be more relaxed on the annexation. But, you know, if they were to annex, typically, technically, they have to provide the water sewer.
You know, that, when we were talking to Todd Water and Maryland Fire and Mental Services, there was really no interest from them in going into an area that was already developed, they were interested in going into a new development, setting their plant there.
Do you think there's anything that's changed since then? You know, technology changes, so, you know, maybe it's service that costs as much, or maybe it's more limited to them. I was wondering if you have any conversations with either one of these two companies, in the past two or three years, or whatever?
No, that, I mean, again, scale's important.
That's where you're probably getting there.
And the idea with them coming in with new developments, and serving new developments, we keep in mind that growth pays for growth, so you guys have gotta take, you don't have to worry about that burden for that. If it's new developments, you're not paying for them, but growth pays for growth. So, with the existing hotspots, or trouble areas, or the next Mars middle situation, where there's just some sort of environmental or public health issue, and then you're correct in with it, that, you know, it could be turned over to, say, say, Aquanico, for example, or something like that. If the county got the money to put pipes in the ground, you could perhaps then go to, you know, M E S, or private, or put it out for private system, where they could come in and put in a treatment disposal system. You know, in that current case, it's twenty thousand gallons, or thirty thousand gallons. What we've seen in the rural systems, you know, there's four of them are in that same range. And if the county was doing it, I could see four identical pre-engineered treatment systems in those locations, you know, whether you want a private developer to do it, or whether the county wants to do it. You know, that technology is the preferred technology. And, when you mentioned, like, the east carter, where we are with these loadings is, we need to have an understanding, you know, with the state to figure out, do we have to find land, or can we get a pipe discharge? But, that changes the economic significantly. Finding land is gonna be problematic and more expensive than a stream discharge, particularly in the lower elevation, you know, there's a lot of areas that don't bring pretty well anywhere.
Right, absolutely.
And there's a lot of areas now, that groundwater's coming up to. And, you know, when you extend out fifty, hundred years, it's gonna get worse, not better. So, you know, our first choice from a technical point of view, is getting the state to allow a stream discharge. And again, if we're putting a hundred thousand pounds in, right now, through septic systems, but if we put a stream discharge into a treatment plant, it'd only be thirty thousand pounds, you know, where we've saved two-thirds.
Yeah.
Keep in mind, then, that allows that population to double in the next fifty, hundred years, but you have to allow for growth. So, even if you double, then you're only two-thirds of what you're doing now. So, you've still got a net savings to the base system. To me, that represents a win-win for the county, and the state, and the bay.
The question I have is, the purpose of the study, that's just to determine a couple things. One is the deed, how much it says that there is to this, how bad the situation is, which is understandable. But, I thought also, that aside from looking at the aspect that a solution is to, with team like with the city, and look at some type of urban service district, the city's been very adamant that they're not gonna do it without an annexation. Maybe some discussions could change that, but I thought the purpose of the study was to see how economic accounting could become more self-sufficient. That being the case, if you're gonna propose to put one plant in place, as you said before, it's all about scale. That one plant can't even go online, probably until it has at least sixty agreements. The homeless, at one time, they'll re-hook up. So, my, how do we get over that hump of initiating, let's just look at one, forget all the other, let's just look at one. How are you gonna do that? We had so much trouble with Fruitland, just trying to hook up with the issues they have. How was why council found, they just take, chose the example on that one area. How do you build this homeless society? We're building a stormwater management plant here, don't even hook up. Where's the carrot? Right, this home on.
Well, I think it's, I think it's a matter of.
Esten. You love that.
So, I think that's where we're saying that there's different projects in different areas. So, like, that east corridor, I mean, you are backed up right next to the city. That's why, from a technical standpoint, we say that. But, you do have other areas, like, if you wanna go into Whitehaven, I mean, you would be, that would be a county self-sufficient system, where there's nobody around you. So, you go in, you know, you put in a system, and you're able to, you know, govern that, however you develop your governing entity to do that.
Right, but how do you get the people to agree to the project?
So, I think, I think it's town hall, Whitehaven, and we discussed this. And so, it's really helping the citizens understand how this is going to work, I think getting their buy-in is key.
That's what I'm asking.
So, that's what I did at the town hall, Whitehaven.
What could happen? Just like what has happened in some of the municipalities in Parkland County, in the past twenty, thirty, forty years ago. The federal government, or the, we'll call it Garmel, the federal government or the state, comes in and says, you're gonna put in water. Our people are gonna have to do, we're not gonna let you put in wells and septic. That's, that's, that's how you get over the hump. Unfortunately, one way is they make you do it. And that's, I think that's what happened in a couple of municipalities, correct?
Yeah, and I think the great example, which everybody's heard of, is water smell. You know, we went in there, you had fifty percent, or you needed at least, what was it, fifty percent to reject the idea? And it didn't happen. You know, most, the majority of people wanted it, so we just had to basically go, heard house by house, and deal person by person. But, at the end, everybody ended up connecting.
Yes.
But, yeah, there was some resistance, but it wasn't, you know, showstopper resistance. It still went on.
You get an area of interest, and then you, through us engineers and help you, we kinda come up with a boundary, we think this is the appropriate boundary, based on what we're hearing from the citizens, and we come up with a boundary. And then, we try to do some, some specific preliminary cost assessment, which we're gonna do.
Right.
And then, those citizens get the benefit of that presentation. This is the service area, this is the system you're gonna get, and then we tell them the advantages, and then we tell them the cost, and then generally, they go to referendums.
There are some, there are some standalone facilities right now, and, I don't wanna mention the name of the particular development, but their utility bills are astronomical. And, that's where, that's, see, I'm trying to see where the end game is, because I recognize all the data, all the needs and all that. I'm talking more to the human element. Where are we gonna come to a point where we say, you know, you walk into this son of a house, and say, okay, you're gonna be spending three hundred dollars a month now? Are we going to use a carrot approach, as opposed to a stick approach? Say, you have to do this now? Or, is, with the grants and funding, is there some way to ease these people into a system and help them in that transition?
All of both. You know, part of it's a carrot, part of it's a stick. Part, you know, lots, part of it's scale, part of it's the wealth of the community that you're talking about, I don't think you're sure what areas you're talking about, but I don't know, the wealth of that community. You know, what we're seeing is a degradation of the housing stock in areas that don't have, you know, good source, you know, septic, you know, septic, septic systems. Particularly in areas that are older and smaller bonds. You know, it's, you know, it's gonna be like the lesser of two evils. Yes, you might have high bills, but you improve the value of your property, of your house, it is resellable, you know, you can make improvements, and if your neighbors do likewise, you can turn the whole area around. If you don't wanna just pay that money, which is gonna be, you know, hard to swallow. But, you know, if you wanna see vacant houses down the street, and quality of your neighborhood going down.
Is there a plan, and the end game, when the plan is finished, this, this, will include that assistance to the county, so that, you know, how to apply what you're given, to that extent?
Right, user rate.
Everything, we took, make, so it's a total practice, of deciding, okay, here's exactly, you know, when we get that, put it in a month, so here's exactly what we need to do.
No, no, we're not, that's, you know, that's a preliminary engineering study, and this is a master plan. So, necessarily, it's higher level planning, looking at fifty to a hundred years. We're not building all this in the next five, ten, twenty years. Some of this is five years, some of it's thirty years, some of it's fifty years.
We've been spending five years, talking about ten years.
It does take time, it does take time.
Well, that's clear. You know, you go after your grants, so you go, you put a couple of projects into the state, get an idea, so you put in, maybe, the east corridor, because that's an example of a project where you've been working with municipality, you put in a rural village, do you know what I mean, and see what kind of grant money you get, and then, you might get a lot of money in one of them, and then you just get started. You know, so you, eventually, maybe you'll have twenty-five hundred customers, and you can put those user rates over all twenty-five hundred customers, and you're not just hitting one small area with high rates.
John's statement about, he thought we were working toward being, what'd you say, independent?
Self-sufficient.
Yes, self, self, independent from the city. I thought that was kind of, was that the gist of what he thought we wanted, or not? I mean, because I keep hearing, hooking up to the city, and I thought that we had always talked about becoming independent. And I understand the east corridor system, because it's close enough to Salisbury, but I can also tell you that most of those folks probably won't be annexed into the city. So, is that where the study's going, for hooking up?
I think you're gonna be focusing on the city areas, but you, there's a whole county, you know what I mean? You've got Pittsville, you've got Willers, you've got areas around them even, where they, you know, they might be wanting to partner in a different way than in Salisbury, I think, on the partner. Or, I mean, if you start developing your own systems.
But, that's what, that's what I'm getting at. What are we studying? Are we studying trying to look up the Salisbury, or are we studying, trying to put in our own system? I thought we were, I thought we'd always talked about getting into the water sewer business, or not?
Well, I think what Pete.
While we are, you're definitely proposing getting into the water sewer. You are going in that direction.
Right, that's our challenge, right, that's your challenge. If we can go to the.
If we can go to the water sewer business, but it'd be much cheaper, much more efficient and economical in that, just that one example of the ones just east of Salisbury, you know, we said, Old Ocean City Road. Obviously, doing something by partnership with the city of Salisbury is going to be much more efficient. Cost, and it can be done soon. You know, creating our own system, that could be done, but that's going to be a huge investment.
Well, I understand.
And it's not going to help these people for the next five years.
But the comments that's come from the council in the past is we'd want it to be independent from Salisbury and create our own water sewer. You know, so I just wonder, you know, where your study's going and is it being studied in this corridor here? What the two options are? Is there two options on the table? Okay, we're going to hook up the Salisbury, or we're not going to hook up the Salisbury. So what's the other option? Or is, is there, then movement made to find land, is there then, price is achieved, defined at what is no cost? I mean, is that, is that, is that done?
For the east side corridor, that's all been done. We did a feasibility study, and we did try to price out looking at land. And out of necessity, as I recall, I don't hold exactly, but it was something along the lines of, we're going to have to draw a radius about five miles and go to the east outside of my house, where we think we can get land, and we need this many acres. And we have this much of pipeline, and we'd have to get from one acre to one acre. And we gave some cost estimates for that. So that, you do have those capital cost estimates.
So with that, in particular, study, how much input did you have with the citizens in that area?
That, we did not, didn't have any input, we did not. There wasn't a hard part of it. And again, it's interesting thing about this study, you know, the option of the county, getting the county into the water sewer is very desirable, and it's going in that direction for sure. And it's going to have, and it's going to be a necessity in these rural villages areas. Now, in areas that are close to existing infrastructure, you know, it's going to get down to, you know, a savvy economic decision, you know, which way you go. I mean, our answer was to, you know, advise the county, what's in your best interest when people have sewer problems? What solution do you want to bring to that? And obviously, we do hear people would rather not go into the sewer.
And I'm hearing that a lot.
But you also hear people who say, man, I got a failing septic system. I just want the county to help me out. And if I want to sit up on the city, you know, we haven't really done the public outreach. And that necessity, it specifically did not put in this report for us to do stakeholder meetings. Sometimes in this master plan, you might have selected people where we would have, every quarter, we would meet with a group of people in various interests and keep them abreast of. So now we really want the county council to have the whole report. Or we do, you know, public presentations and stakeholder meetings and workshops. You know, at the end of the day, if you want to go county system, that's, that's kind of possible.
And at some point, we probably do need to, and it bears on the backs of the council, but at some point, we do need to have public input. We can't make decisions.
No, no, absolutely at some point. I think John Posobiec, we've discussed this in some detail recently with John Posobiec. So he, because he's coming into the game new, and he wanted to get, he wanted to honor what the spirit was with this contract we've done. And he can put it quite, quite eloquently, eloquently, in terms of how he, how he phrases it. I've always put it in the terms of, the county wants to answer the question is, how do we address problems when they come up? You know, what's our course of action? And we're going to give you the best technical, financial, and manager. Politically, you know, it may not be the best, you know, it may not be the prettiest of what you'd like it to be politically, but, but, you know, you can make that decision, and God bless you, because that's what you're, you know, what your goal is. And we don't want to sway you politically one way or the other. But, you know, our best expertise is the technical, financial, and manager. Now, because you take the east side corridor, I mean, if we start putting a sewer in the Old Ocean City Road, we're going to end up running across, beating the park road from the northeast collector. You know, and you're going to have a road that's got county sewer going this way and city sewer going this way. You know, and you're going to have two sewer lines and two water lines in this direction, that direction. You know, how many times are somebody going to be called out there and working on the streets? And how expensive it's going to be to work around existing utilities set already there? So, you know, we try to learn from the experience we've seen from others. Sussex County was a good example of that, because they intermixed county systems with few private companies. And they've actually worked out arrangements on to try to minimize, eliminate having two separate independent wastewater government runs, their lines down the same street.
When you were, when you were doing your feasibility study, you were doing your feasibility study on the east side corridor. Did you look at the railroad railways, water running, water sewer down that, rather than running down the street?
A little bit.
And how it worked out?
It's, it's tough. Exist, railroad railways, yeah, there's no guarantee you're, you're going to get it. Now, the thing we had in Ocean, you know, then we looked at where the abandoned railroad was, you know, on one side of Old Ocean City Road. But I think a lot of that property's been already turned back over to the property.
My last, yeah.
You know, and that's still an open possibility, but that may be the best approach. And when it comes to, to the rates, you know, how many people pay a hundred dollars a month for toll bills? Or Comcast? Or two hundred dollars a month? Or even three hundred dollars a month? A hundred dollars a month is thousands of dollars a year. Two hundred dollars a month is twenty-four hundred dollars a year. Three hundred dollars, that's over three thousand dollars a year. So people are paying these types of fees, are ready for certain things that they feel are a utility, you know, private enterprise. We got to decide was, is private enterprise, is private enterprise the best way to give the people the lowest rates? Generally, they don't feel like government itself, government in a general sense, people don't think they can, can do something that's as utilitarian as, as providing a utility structure. I don't have to agree with that. I think with the right manager structure, governments who don't have the property, it's, can run a very efficient, you know, water, water waste, or has a utility.
They can be private enterprise, unless they, if it's working, then the county gets blamed for it.
Is that how eastern utility works? Is that how eastern utility works?
I think, I think that's an interesting example that we do want to flesh out some more. They have a utility structure, a very kind of corporate, private enterprise type of structure, with the board of directors and chairman of the board, and chief executive officer, first officer, chief financial officer. And I think they do own and manage water, not only water sewer, but also, and I believe now even internet.
Will you have any recommendations for some type of exploratory committee on this? Since that's not what you were tasked to do?
When, when the reports, you know, when we, when we get, give the report.
So I'm asking, do you have any suggestions or recommendations for some type of exploratory committee?
I can try to work on that. I think it starts with a representative from each of the municipalities, the rural, rural villages. And it starts with people who are both in favor and opposed. And it's important to make sure you have the citizens that are affected.
Absolutely.
And part of it, because they're the ones that have to pay the bills at the end of the month.
You had mentioned that it'd be the council's decision in the long run, it'd be the council's decision to, to get this meeting. As a recommendation, what would you say, what would be maybe a five-step process that you would suggest the council would need to follow to make sure that we can implement properly? So you know there's a quarter, east, east quarter, you know it is in need, we've seen it, we're aware of it. What would be the first five steps, four steps, three steps that the council would need to make, to make it come to fruition? In general terms? Because we're going to have to make that decision sooner or later. We have to know where, where it's on first, where it's on second.
Mr. Dogba, he's thinking about that. Can I make just a general suggestion? You know, I might want to look at some other counties that have gone through this. And I know Queen Anne's County has recently, Pete probably knows of some others.
Trying to make...
Some of them are sanitary. Yeah, trying to make them as comparable as possible. And I think what we're going to find out is, the route to take is to have a sanitary commission. Probably sooner rather than later. If I'm not mistaken, Pete, I think most of these lending agencies prefer to deal with a separate commission rather than they ask the legislative body for various reasons. And I think that it might be wise to do that. Queen Anne's County has just been very successful in running down Kent Island, the southern...
Southern Kent Island.
In what is a pretty well-recognized, very good program. And they had the issue, of course, of how do you get people to hook on? Some news articles, I'm stating, I'm not familiar with it directly, indicate that what they did is they showed the people that look, the value of their homes are going to go up. So it's not like they're getting screwed, and they do force them to, to book into the system. I mean, that, I think we're going to find that's a necessity.
That's a necessity.
At some point, but that's one way they did it. They had an appraisal made by an MAI praiser of how this would affect typical homes along that stretch of Kent Island. And that, that basically sold it. There is one interesting aspect I found when I was reading about it. There's, there's a cost in addition to putting in the lines in the public street, the mains, let's say. The lines coming out from the homes is a separate problem, because typically, septic lines run out to the side or the rear. And you're going to have to put lines in on each piece of property out to your mains. Which is, and I don't know whether you can keep public funding for that or not, Pete, but that was, that was part of the assessment that they made these folks pay for. They gave them time to do it. And I think we could learn a lot if we looked at some other counties.
Yeah, I agree.
And that would be a good one, there may be others.
Josh gave us a complete breakdown in last, in two thousand and nineteen, just the beginning of two thousand and nineteen, Josh Hastings. I believe he may have supplied everyone with about four or five documents in PDF files on just that Queen Anne's County and Kent Island. It was a ski bar or something like that.
I've seen, I know Kent Island, too.
Yeah, so again, just in case you have a solution or an idea on the, any three or four steps that we need to take.
That, that technological approach, you know, for where we are in Comico County, is best, probably best suited for the high-asking, mobile, in the area in terms of modeling where we would have something, something similar to that. And number two is, interestingly enough, and honestly enough, we went through, and in our search for grant money, we included money to connect the homeowners on private property. And we got pushback from the federal agencies. And we ultimately prevailed, because that was part of the budget and the funding. And in our also in that case, you know, generally, there was an allocation of fifteen hundred dollars per household to do the work on your private property to get your water or sewer of your private property into the public right of. It's a very challenging, difficult process. And I think it does, it's not uniformly done that way. The hard case is in extreme poverty areas, where you can get exceptions, or you can get third-party, you know, that's, that's a third-party banking program, you know, that helps support that network. But, you know, get that factor in.
All right, we got to wrap this up some, and I know you had a lot of questions. Do you have any more comments?
Is it, I'm going to work, maybe we'll keep pursuing the project, we're going to the next steps with the data that we have. We have enough data now that we're going to reach out to the state, or areas like the east side corridor, and an area like White Haven, and an area like Marjella. And, and then see, you know, and see where they, where they stand. We say, you know, it takes multiple years to do this, or you'll get a sense from the state whether they think, what we think is a hot priority, a hot priority or a hotspot, whether they agree with us and willing to, and funding. And at the same time, we're going to give them the big picture, which I think should enhance your position. And at the same time, if favorable grant money comes through in one of those two areas, you know, to feel like the county can then probably implement and pursue those projects without putting your, tying your hand behind your back on where you go in the future as far as setting up, you know, a sanitary district or privatization. You know, you're not, you're not shutting the door on other options that would be more desirable in, in, in the grander scale.
I mean, the goal is to have, I guess, sometime around spring, have a draft report. And that will hopefully answer a lot of your questions on, like, what financial, what you're talking about, what options you have, and then you can start implementing. But just have those answers first.
When you say spring, about when, May, April, right, May, June, or May? Do you want to get an update between now and then, or do you want to wait till then?
Oh, check with John Posobiec. You know, we feel like, you know, John might feel like we have something that we want to share. You know, we should know in May, by mid-May, we should get a preliminary read from the state of Maryland on where, they'll come up with a draft list of where they rank projects for funding.
Okay.
So if we submit two or three, you'll see where they land on that list.
Okay. Any more comments?
During, during that period, Pete, do you think it would be wise to start exploring a commission? So we essentially have it to some extent through Paddockage. Where do you go, if it hasn't, when it's needed?
The commission?
Uh, sanitary commission.
Uh, well, I think I want, in that report, I want to like, it's almost seem to do like, you know, do a chapter report, explain the options and try to define what those options are. Have sort of a table or a matrix table that lists those four options of governance, and list the pros and cons, you know, what's, and what's the advantage of this, what's the disadvantage of that? You know?
Okay. Any more comments?
And then have the county council, like, holistically then decide what you think is best for the county.
I agree with that. Any more comments? All right, I want to thank you all, it was a great presentation, our table was awesome. Thank you.
Our pleasure.
It's a pleasure to see you again.
Yeah, thank you again for letting me be involved.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. All right, this time, we're going to discuss the appointment of a charter review committee as provided in Charter Section one thousand and two point C. Ms. Hartley done some research, and she'd come up with several options to discuss. So Ms. Hartley, can you go through some, please?
I am going to go over the options. I just want to read into the record, like Charter Section one zero zero two, eight. And it says, the county council should at least once every ten years, appoint a charter review committee for the purpose of reviewing the charter and pool, and submitting the recommendations to the county council. And I'll just say, the last charter review committee was appointed in two thousand and eleven. You have a copy of that resolution in your briefing material. So I did think about some options on how council may want to consider making the appointments to the charter review committee. In the past, council members were asked to submit two names for consideration from their districts. This has already been done, if you recall, last summer, it was debated as to whether or not the council should at that time convene the... or not the council should at that time convene the charter review committee, and council members were asked to submit two names. So we do have a list of names already started. Another option is that council could send out a press release, seeking individuals with diverse backgrounds, such as education, some of the judiciary system, legal business, former council members, public servants. And then each council member would then select one or two names of interested persons from those that apply. Another option would be for certain organizations to submit in a nominee, such as the Republican Central Committee, Democrat Central Committee, the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce, the NAACP, the Board of Education. This would be similar to what was done for the elected school board nomination committee. Most of you were here when we went through that process. Another option, which was actually recommended by the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce and the Greater Salisbury, and that is for the county council to ask interested citizens from their council-mannered districts to submit names to serve the charter review committee. Each council person would then select one individual for a total of seven members, and then four members from that same pool of interested citizens would be appointed by the county executive. The only concern I have on that one is that the charter specifically says that the council is to make the appointment, so I would change the language to say that the county executive can make a nomination. There are other recommendations that the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce and the Greater Salisbury Committee has submitted. That is on the council table. And Mr. Bob Taylor has also submitted all some recommendations as well that council may wish to discuss.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Do we have any discussion on this? Ms. Hurley said that each of the council members have already submitted two names.
Well, that's, that was a year ago, so we might wanna look the list over again and see if there's anything to be any changes, you know? People might still not be, might not be interested in still serving or whatever. I think the charter review committee the last time seemed to do a pretty good job, and it's pretty diverse. Still good with the two people for council person as far as I'm concerned.
And who would pick, if the department total of 15, who would pick the 15th one? Would that be the executive's office or nominated?
I don't know. You know, it's.
I mean, the last, I mean, the last time, how did it get to that final? I mean, do you know, how did they get to the final? I think it was the last time, was it 15 last time?
Right. Actually, there was 16 members last time. There were.
But how did they?
I was on it. I don't remember.
Yeah, I'm not sure I remember.
You weren't elected at that time, right?
I was in the highs.
Yeah.
It was like 2011.
Yeah, so, you know, you figure it was, you know, who, who had the final, so you lead down the, all the different people to get to that 15 in the end, you know, the council or executive or?
It was a resolution by the council.
And this is a county council?
Well, I know, ultimately, it's the county council.
It's a county council.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I can speak to the former council administrator as far as the process that was used, and he did say that council actually selected the individuals. It was like a round robin. He just went through the, the list of names that were submitted.
He picked the names, whether the council member picked thereto or totally just picked them out all together instead of?
Council decided as a body, among the names submitted.
Just come there and nail them. So I guess one question is, do you want, I mean, you know, the first question is, how many, how many can we want on the committee?
And you want 15, do you want 16, do you want 11?
Right. I mean, personally, I think, I mean, you gotta have it big enough, you have your representation of your community, but it's, it's still keeping it as small as you can. You know, the more people just, it just becomes unmanageable, you know, in order to get decisions made. So, you know.
I technically, most of those charter review meetings, I just watched it, you know, the audience. I think one of their, I think the 15 number is probably a manageable number because a lot of times, this is a pretty intense, long, drawn-out situation, you know? So sometimes people can't make it. So that larger number like that, you know, gives, gives it more of a diversity.
All right, I was thinking if you went to the 11 number, and then people were sick or had something else to do, you'd have an even smaller number. You really couldn't be productive. So I think maybe, I'd write, like I said, 15, like it was before.
Well, I think 15.
Sixteen would be too much.
Yeah, I'll say 15 does it max. You know, maybe, what, do you do 13 or 15?
I think you're gonna have some people that's not gonna make it, some people, you know, who have other obligations.
I think it might be a good idea to put an ad out in paper. I know we do have some names, but it might be a good idea to put some, put some ads out in case you two go out there that we as a body have to follow up sometimes when we're official. And I think, because I think it definitely should give the, the perception that it's as able as possible, you know? Even property isn't very good candidates out there.
Definitely one reason I knew, Laura, is one of the options was getting recommendations from our different. So I think I'd definitely be against that. So if you want, like John just said, we want to keep the politics out of this as much as possible.
Well, how could we advertise it, and that would be effective and cost-effective?
We could send a question on the county's website. We could put an ad in the Salisbury Daily Times.
Put it on Marketplace.
You guys could put it on your Facebook page.
Salisbury County.
Salisbury County would be good. It's a little, it's a little, that might be a good call, you know?
Salisbury County, as opposed to the Daily Times?
Oh, yeah, I think, yeah. I think people, you know.
And it's not an ad, it's just an article, just a short.
Right.
Or.
We're saying we're seeking nominations.
So it'll be like a press release?
Yeah, a press release.
Yeah, a press release. Maybe we can do that, and then have people post that on their social media pages and ask.
I think between that, you know, with the recommendations from the council members, we're gonna have, you know, substantial pool of people to give consideration.
And then we can meet the next time after we get the names, and then go through the ones that we want on the committee.
What is the deadline? Do you wanna have for the submission of the application?
What does the council think?
Two weeks.
Sooner than that, or?
Sooner rather than later. Whatever, whatever we can, you know, expeditiously do within reason. You can probably have that out for Laura in the next.
Another question I'd get too, would it ask, you need a biography, you need a, you know, to need a resume?
It's a good idea.
I think you should submit a resume. They should be able to register voting, like, to vote. That's, I mean, that should be, it'd be nice if they, 18 years old were older.
Well, yeah, they have to start.
Well, I think, I think any more than, politically, I think they need to send a resume.
Right, I agree.
You want to do a kind of qualifications they have.
Well, sometimes that is all we have.
Talking about half-jews.
That is, that is already a qualification. A candidacy.
His voters checking that off.
So what, do we wanna call it a bio? Do we wanna call it a bio or a resume?
It's just a brief resume.
Brief resume?
Yeah. And maybe that's a statement of, just one simple statement of what they're interested in, why they wanna do it, just a brief explanation.
Maybe how often they would have to meet.
I think that should be, you know, that committee will have to actually.
Well, anybody contacts you about it, because I had one person already called me, and I told him, I said, you know, excuse me, I said, I've already had one person call me, and I told him, I said, you know, this is a long, drawn-out process, and it's gonna take weeks. I said, most time, meetings at nights, that's the way they have them before. And he said, what about Wednesday nights? I said, well, I said, they could be Wednesday nights, it could be Tuesday. He said, well, Tuesday nights I'm tied up, Wednesday nights I'm tied up. So you need to, you need, if anybody calls you about this, this, this is an obligation. This isn't just something that's, it's an obligation, so.
Can we put together, like, what, what this body entails, what we need them to do, the purposes?
The basic charge is to, oh, the basic charge would be to evaluate the current charter and see what, what kind of agreements need be made, and that they will be obligated to, uh, one meeting, or minimum of one meeting a week for three to six months.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Some kind of schedule, you know?
And then what would the deadline be to get these names in? First meeting in February, or is that too, too quick?
We still have plenty of time if it's a second meeting.
You say a second meeting?
Yes, so looking at a timeline, I would, I would agree with the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce and the Greater Salisbury Committee that we wanna get these appointments done as soon as possible, so the deadline on March, I think, is appropriate.
Okay. A meeting date in March, is that a meeting date, or prior to that?
Given the fact that we're now approaching the end of January, I think it's the last full week, actually, anyway, we're the end of January, so I, I would say by the first meeting in March.
Well, I was hoping we could choose the applicants, the first meeting in March. But I mean, if we wanna choose them at the second meeting, that's fine too. But if, like, if you say the deadline would be March 1st, we could probably discuss the applicants at the very first meeting.
I should maybe get that press release out for them.
Yeah, they should be able to respond by February 15th, I would think, or February 16th, they should be able to respond that, I mean, if they're really interested, people are hardworking people, they have drive, organized life skills, they usually need that, that.
So the deadline would be second meeting in February. And then the first meeting, we choose the applicants. Is that okay? First meeting in March will choose, okay, you got that?
Now, another note, what would we use, how would we address it?
At the legal council, because they are wanting to use legal counsel. But this is all about law.
Well, maybe one of the applicants can be an attorney. I think N.J. Caldwell was an attorney.
They need, they need a, they need a legal advice from an attorney that's not on the committee, you know? If you, if you had one attorney on there, there should be an outside, we got a council attorney, or we got a county attorney. I think either one of those, or both of them, that'd let them play it out, actually.
I didn't know, probably, it'd be a better idea to have a separate attorney from the county, but I think that they can be non-vias.
Well, these two attorneys have a working knowledge of how the county works, and I think that's an important factor. I mean.
Well, I'm talking trouble, but I mean, then, if there wasn't an attorney on there last time, in terms of, the county, county attorney wasn't part of this.
Well, that, that attorney was chairperson, I think.
Yeah, that was also.
What he was on, I think. But we also, Ed Baker was in the audience most of the time.
Well, that's not him being in the audience, or whatever.
Well, I mean, he was giving legal advice.
That's why he was there.
Yeah, that's why he was there.
I mean, our county attorney, county has an attorney, Mr. Wilber, which is, which would be when he asks Mr. Wilber.
Well, we've got two attorneys. We've got even.
Well, we have a council, as everybody has.
And this is a council action, so, anyway, either one of them.
I have no problem using either one of them if, if this body's okay with it.
No, I've got a big problem.
You wouldn't want them on it?
I would not.
Okay.
Well, not today, but I would not, I mean, I'd be fair, I mean, I mean, this is just out of fairness, but, you know, I wouldn't want a council attorney, I'd basically think that's a check. I mean, you wanna, you wanna keep that out of, you know, I mean, just out of fairness, you know? I don't think Mr. Taylor can separate the, you know, his, you know, I guess I'd use term personal bodies from legal advice.
But we still have another.
I won't respond to that at this meeting.
I, I think what I was trying to suggest is that there could be the perception that if we had a council attorney here, that the legal advice might tend towards to benefit the legislative branch as opposed to the executive.
And that's probably put better, you know?
I think that's really.
My phrase went real well.
Yeah, it's, it's a perception.
I'm not trying to offend you, Mr. Taylor, I just don't think it's gonna be viewed as being unbiased.
Well, if we, if we did it the other way, with Mr. Wilber, wouldn't that?
I believe the county attorney, I understand, Joe, and we've had our differences on all this, but, not you and me, but the, except the county attorney. The, the county attorney is bound to the executive and legislative branch, both.
By the charter.
By charter.
Right.
I have no problem with either one of them.
Excuse me?
I have no problem with either one of them, or either one of them, or both of them, or exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly, you had a statement.
I said, maybe we should, maybe we should ask them if they're interested in doing it.
Would, would the county attorney, words for us, I think he would be open to offering advice. Mr. Wilber?
Okay. Whatever the council.
You have to speak into the microphone, sorry.
Yeah. Whatever.
So you'd be open to representing the charter review committee on legal advice?
Sure, sure.
That's what you wish?
Is everybody okay with that? Ari?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Hurley?
Um.
I should go.
Yes. The charter review committee will also be administered, help with getting their minutes posted and things of that nature.
I've reviewed that before.
I believe Mr. Kramer actually did the minutes. I'm not certain if he posted them online at that time, but, um, so, I mean, I'd be more glad to do that for the charter review committee, that's what I'd like.
If you would like to.
I just wanna make sure it's okay.
Yeah, if you're taking a minute, then you're, I just don't know. Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
I think that's it.
All right. With that said, let's move on to the closed work session. Do you need a motion? Thank you. Can someone close that?
Someone needs to go to the restroom real quick. Couple of minutes, right?